It's kind of different for us to do something like this and I think it's a good thing. And I've talked to some of my friends and council people over in Stallings and they've said you've done a great job over there and they've enjoyed having you. This is one of the things that they've told me. And just a few things that, you know, that I know you best for is you being the town manager in Charlotte. But you've been the town manager in several different places and you've worked in government for 25, 30 years?
Forty.
Forty years. Forty years. So you've got a little bit of experience and I think we all can learn something from you. And I think that's what I'm here for and I hope that's what everybody's here for, to gain some experience and maybe teach us a little bit about working together. And I think that would be a good thing for any council. But without saying anything else, I'm going to turn it over to you and let's get started. Mike, do you have anything to say?
No, other than to say a piece on one, thank you for taking time out of your day to do this. I know many of you who have day jobs and things like that, you have to use leave time and when you have no vacation time. Well, I spent it at a town meeting, so I know it's quite a commitment for all of you. A few years ago, we did the nine priorities. It was right in the middle of COVID. It served as well, but it's time to go back and look at, are these still the same priorities? And to use those priorities to kind of help put some things together as we're starting to do our budget process. Everybody has something to contribute to benefit the town. And then just identify the group dynamics, how do we kind of move forward as a group? And that's all I've got. Just go all, thank you for all of this work.
Sure. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm glad to be here and looking forward to this process. As the mayor said, I've been in this business a long time. In 1982, my first job in the business was assistant town manager in Wake Forest, which as you know, in Wake County, not in Winston-Salem. They're still really bitter about that, so if you're in Wake Forest, don't bring it up. But I've been doing this a long time. I worked in a couple of cities as an employee. I've worked with a lot of cities either through my time at UNC Charlotte as associate provost or now in our consulting business. And so I approach this from a problem-solving perspective. I'm an okay facilitator. I'm a good municipal problem solver. And so that's what, that's how my partner and I structured our business relative to retreats. And so I would like today to be a conversation which I will facilitate and, you know, the more specific you can be about your desires and your concerns, the better. But you see the agenda, which is really structured for two days, today and March the 5th, which is currently 9 to 12. And later in the day, we need to talk about that start time and see if there's ability to move that up for scheduling purposes. But where we stop today, we'll start on March the 5th. Where I hope we get to today is down through the two of these suggested next steps, which I have on the last page, of things to do between now and March the 5th. But if we only make it through number four today, then we'll pick up on March the 5th. Thank you for your time. I met with each of you either by phone or in person and all of those conversations were helpful, open and honest and professional. I appreciate your time on that. And all of the material in this package that's not in a shaded box are your comments. And so none of the comments that will go through are mine. I don't know your town well enough to have come up with these things. So where there is a shaded box, we'll talk through that. But, you know, I would like to walk through this over the next few hours and have a conversation about it. I asked you four questions when we met or when we talked. And the first one would be, what would make this retreat a success? Yes, sir.
Can you speak into microphone?
Yeah.
Please.
Yes. The, is it on?
Get one of the, was one of those things fit?
Yeah.
And work?
Yeah. We do it last time.
Is anybody else here?
Sorry. You need one, Dave?
I hear him okay. I guess I'm close enough to hear.
Okay. Is this better?
What do you got?
Better?
I can't get it in my ear. It wraps around your earlobe. Yeah, thanks. Like that should work. Maybe add the volume up there.
How are we doing?
I don't hear him up there.
No, you have the speakers turned up.
I don't think.
Let me get the volume up here.
I think it's tied into this.
Is it one of the good?
Hello? Oh, I, can you hear that?
Yeah, he needs this.
You need that?
This mic's not working. How about that mic?
Why don't you sit over here, Kurt?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Do you want to sit here and talk into these?
Yours isn't working, but this one's working, so that's just normal.
Okay.
It connects with the microphone.
But Tom just said yes.
It's not just like here.
Try again. Go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So we'll stay where we are for right now. So I ask you four questions in our conversations. The first one was, what would make this retreat a success from your perspective? What are the outcomes you're looking for, both today and March the 5th? And I got good feedback from you. Then I also ask, what's your vision for Indian Trail? Not just today, but three years, five years, 10 years down the road? What would you like to see, what would you like to see happen? What would you like to see not happen? What are the things that are most important to you going forward?
It works. It works.
It works.
It's working.
All right. So we had the vision in conversations, what your, what your long-term vision is for Indian Trail. Third, we talked about what was impeding accomplishment of that vision? What were the obstacles in the way? Whether they are policy, interpersonal, whether it's working with the state of North Carolina, whatever the case may be? What are those things that are impediments to achieving your vision? And we, we had a good conversation about that and we will walk through it. And then finally, I ask, what are your priorities short-term for the next three years? We are already into preparing the fiscal '25 budget. And so for fiscal years '25, '26 and '27, what are the priorities that are important for you? And we've got good conversation about that. There are some that you all agree on and some that you don't. And so we will talk through those. As Mike said, in 2021, you did an exercise and established nine priorities. And a lot of those are still here in the six that we'll talk about. My observation would be that nine's too many. It's hard to have nine priorities and know exactly what's the most important. And some of them were more process suggestions than hard priorities. So I think you probably, if you are still today and on March 5th, where you were in those conversations, there will be a smaller number going forward. So we'll talk about those priorities. And then the next steps that we will talk about, I think between now and March 5th, if you agree on what your priorities are for the next three years, then Mike and his staff can bring back an outline of what the work plan looks like. And you could see that on March the 5th. And then adopt it at a later time and basically see it start to be implemented in your upcoming budget process. So let's start on page two. Oh, I'm sorry, page three. And I know you can read really well, but I will go through these things because a couple of them I want to elaborate on, on different pieces. So this was the, what would make this retreat a success? Open your minds to see things differently. And that's a good thing for retreats. It's a good time to be not encumbered by regular agenda items. You can think short-term and long-term from a higher perspective. And so as we go through today, think about how you might want to see things differently. Demonstrate that the mayor and each council member cares about the town of Indian Trail. And I don't doubt that all of you do. I sense that all of you care about it in different ways, which is normal. No two people think exactly alike, but we need to talk through that. And it particularly comes up again in the visioning and the impediments to the vision section. Determine how we are going to be accountable to each other in a highly political environment. So have discussion around that. And you have a policy you adopted several years ago, a conduct policy that you have in place. It seems to be well-written and succinct, but if that's not working for you, then we should talk about what should be different. Determine how we are going to be respectful, how we are going to respectfully correct the public record when it is incorrect. And I wanted to mention the public record phrase there. Technically, the public record is what Trina's doing right now. But perceptually, for the public, who doesn't know the difference between a formal public record and informal public record, you know, any speech that's made to the Rotary Club or any email that's responded to a constituent or anything on social media or whatever the case may be, if it comes from one of you, the public is very likely to perceive that as a public record. And so you need to talk about that and think about how you're going to correct that record, if you're going to correct that record. Council as a whole reflects the, on the actual job of a council member. So what's your job? What's the mayor's job? What's Mike's job? Talk about, if appropriate, and again, these are, some of these are one person said them, others, there were multiples. And I promised all of you anonymity and so not going to get into the details of that. But, you know, if that's something you want to talk about, we need to focus on what's the job of a council member. Represent the town and each other professionally. Discuss how we can work towards unanimity of purpose. So many divisive votes on so many things are not appropriate. It shows that we cannot govern. And the last one, devise a plan to complete things. We don't complete anything. So my observation after those conversations and these points, with the exception of the last two parts of the last two, it shows that we cannot govern. You really are. It may be a lot of three to twos, but you are governing. Devise a plan to complete things. We don't complete anything. That's a, that's a value statement that we can talk about later on and it does come up again later on. But with the exception of those two, that we cannot govern and we don't complete anything, all of the other things were fairly, they weren't necessarily stated in the same way, but these were the sentiments that ran through. So let's talk about that list. Is there anything that you feel should not be a desired outcome or something that you just feel is unattainable? Let's start with that question.
Do you have a question?
Mm-hmm.
So I feel like a council person, so sometimes I think you're, I guess oftentimes. Oftentimes, I feel like you are going to have a split vote because your community is different and the people that we talk to are different and we're representing the town as a whole. So I don't know if I feel like that is such a bad thing. I mean, obviously you want to all agree on everything, but our town doesn't agree on everything. So I don't know if that will ever be attainable because we are representing the town as a whole, not just one group of people with one train of thought.
That's, that's fair.
And if anyone has a problem hearing, if you'll just, you know, kind of raise your hand or give a notification, encourage people to just kind of speak close in to the mic.
What'd you say, Mike?
Just so we can make sure that everybody's hearing everything.
Are there, are there other comments on these statements that, what success would look like at the end of the day and the end of March 5th?
I think Crystal hit a, you know, is, was a good observation and what she said. I think we need to, we all should concentrate more on what's good for the town and not what's good for ourselves. And I think that's the key. I think that's one of the reasons that we're here, is so we can do what, what we think is good for the town. Like you said, we may not always agree, but, but let's concentrate on what we think is good for Indian Trail.
David, I agree. Like Crystal said though, we're all going to have different points of view, you know? Not everyone's going to agree on certain things that we're trying to accomplish as a group. Like Crystal said, again, you know, not everybody agrees, you know? I might think 99% of the population don't like this, but where you might think the opposite way. They want that, you know? So I agree. I mean, I think it's hard, we're going to have, you know, it's good to have, you know, debate, if you will.
I just want to add, so I think to make it successful though, we have to respect each other. So yes, you and I may not agree on something, but when we leave here, we need to respect each other. You know, what happens up here is what's best for the town, you know, and majority goals. I think, you know, taking stuff outside of council meetings and trying to kind of tear down because we didn't get our way, I don't think that that should continue. And I think that a lot of the first bullet points is, you know, because of that.
You know, Crystal, again, you're, you're right. But you know, when we have, you know, innuendos towards another individual, I think it's unfair. You know, we use our council comments, you know, in a negative way sometimes and I just don't, and, you know, and the other person don't have a chance to reboot, rebut, you know? And it's just, we need to top, stop that, you know? And I think we need to try to be more professional, you know? And I too have been guilty of that after the, the council meeting. You know, I've said stuff and done things that I'm not proud of and, and I want to change for the good.
Tom, on the innuendo you mentioned, is that during the council meeting?
Well, yes, sir. We'll get, we'll get innuendos and council comments, you know, where it's negative, it's degrading, it's an assumption, you know? It's what one might think, that individual might think about another individual or what has happened in the past, you know? Something like that, on that line. I think that, that, that kind of language needs to stop, you know? And then, then there won't be an aggravation after the council meeting, you know? If someone's got a high temper or a temper on what was said derogatory about said individual, you know? So that's, that's just my piece on that.
Okay.
I'd like to add, when I went to the seminar for the league, one thing that stuck out in my mind was they were talking about transitioning from campaigning to being on council. And it showed me that when I was out there in the public, I was talking about everything that I wanted to do, what I wanted to see come to Indian Trail, what I wanted to see. And then they reminded me that now you're part of a council. So it's not all about what you want. And I try to take the approach, when I get an email from a citizen, I'll just tell them, look, I'm one of five people on the council. I need to talk with these people first or it needs to go through them. So it's not going to be just about me. And so, you know, there's a part of me that says, well, I got the, everything I campaigned about, I have to make sure I do it because if not, somebody's going to bring it up. But then in the same aspect, I said, well, you know, maybe I can talk to these other people about this is what I campaign on. What do you think? Can we move it forward instead of making them get credit for it?
Okay. Good point.
Firstly, you know, there's issues that, gosh, somebody has somebody calling in wanting an employee fired and that sort of thing. That kind of stuff has to stop. I mean, overload the staff with minuscule tasks that constantly taking the staff away from what they should be doing for the people of the town. We just, we need a big change.
He can't hear him.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, a lot of things put on social media that should not be put on social media. You know, if, things need to be worked out here in the town and not broadcast all over the, you know, the, the community. So, and just, you know, stuff that overburdens the staff, that, you know, is not necessarily, you know, good for the, for the town in general because there are bigger fish to fry than a lot of these small complaints that are, I mean, just every day coming in. So social media and emails need to be cleaned up quite a bit. Okay. Todd?
Well, one of the main focuses I thought of coming here was to try and set priorities on behalf of the citizens. And now we've already turned this into a personal thing. So I didn't come here to get personal. I think the citizens would like for us, especially in meetings and stuff, to show a joint that we're trying to be respectful and get along. I think that's what the citizens expect of the council. So, you know, I'm not going to rest it here and getting into personal beefs and all that. I like to really just focus on the priorities that we want for our citizens. Thank you.
To make the town more productive, the council more productive, you know, I think that personal issues should be put aside and, and that we make this, this town operate more efficiently and, and that's by less things posted controversial on social media. It's, you know, petty things that are constantly coming into the town that, you know, just a quick phone call could, could handle it. But, you know, the, the county, I mean, the staff has just been driven crazy by minuscule nitpicking stuff all over town and that's not productive for the, you know, 43, 45,000 people that we have in this town. They, they expect other things than, you know, what's, you know, being stressed here.
I got one last thing, Kurt. And I, I just thought what you said, Clarence, kind of hit things right between the eyes. And I had not thought, and I think that class didn't do good. I mean, that's great and I need, I need to go, because we never stop learning. I can tell you that right now. When we do, we're dead. We're gone. Can't learn anymore. But I think a key, and I don't, and I don't think we want to get in here and get, and this is not a personal thing, but we want to make ourselves better. Let's make ourselves a better council. And, and the key thing to that, what you said was campaigning. There's a difference between campaigning and being on council. Because when we campaigned, we campaigned, a lot of times we campaigned against each other because we, well, we did. We campaigned against each other. And we may disagree, but we need to stop campaigning on, on different outlets, different, and I'm talking to everybody. I'm not talking to anybody in particular, I'm talking to everybody. We need to stop campaigning. We need to quit, you know, saying, well, this is my idea or this is, this is what somebody else is doing or this is what, need to stop campaigning. We make a, listen, not everything, like we said before, we're going to agree on. You know, one of the things that I, you know, one of the things that I admit I was, I think I was wrong about is, was this building. I campaigned that we shouldn't build this building without putting it on for a bond referendum. I did that. But you know what? My name's on the building down there and I'm proud of this building. And I was wrong. We, we needed a, a, a town hall like this. We did.
You know, David, just an example of what I did yesterday with two employees, they, they loathe each other, excuse me, they loathe each other. You know, I told them both, they're Hispanic women, they, you know, I have to have a translator. And I told them both, I said, you don't have to like each other to work together. You're not here, I mean, I'm sorry, you might not like me, but you know, we're here for a purpose. You know, we're here to, to resolve issues and make things happen, you know, for the restaurant, in this case, the town. You know, just, all you got to do is be cordial with one another. I don't expect you to like each other and I can't help that. You know, but if you continue to work here, you know, you want to work here, you're going to have to get along. And, you know, and people will vote us out if you don't get along. You know, just like me, I will get rid of one of them if I have to, you know, to get the, the result we need. And, but here, we just need to treat each other with dignity and respect. Same thing as I told them yesterday.
I agree. And just to go ahead and finish up, what I was saying is, we all are on the same team. We're on the same team. We don't necessarily have to like each other, but we all are on the same team. And that includes everybody that works in this building, that we are on the same team. The town staff, in my opinion, make us look better. We've got a great town staff. We've got a fantastic town staff. They're here, they make me look better. They make, I think, everybody in this room look better. And we do not need to criticize town staff. We need to work with town staff. And if we have a question, go to town staff and ask them, why do you think that way? Why, why did you say that? Why, why did that? Because they're, they're not vested. They're, they're here strictly for the betterment of the town. They don't have any, they don't have politics in what they do. There's no politics in, in what they're doing. They're doing their job and they're doing it, a lot of them are, have master's degrees in what they do. A lot of them are the experts in what they do. And I've always said, I like to surround myself with people that are smarter than I am. And a lot of them are smarter than I am. I think most of them are smarter than I am. And the reason I say that is because they all have a master's degree or whatever in their profession and what they do. And I do not. So they know. Now, if they want to know how to go out and sell stuff and, and that type, I might know a little bit more about selling than they do. But as far as, you know, your, you know, your, your permits and your planning and your parks, let's go, let's, let's go spend some time with them before we go out and make judgments out. And I don't think they're out to get any particular in, in body. I don't think they're got, I think they all want to work with us. They all want to work with us. So we in turn have to try to work with them. I'll shut up.
I'd like to come back to what Tom said. You said you have two employees, but the thing is, those two employees, they know the goal at the end. So, you know, whether they work together or not, the common goal is what's best for the restaurant. And I think that's what we're missing here. We don't have the common goal at the end, however you get there. You know, football, you had a wide receiver, their job is to catch the ball. You got a running back, their job is to run the ball. But in the end, their, their goal is to win together. So we're missing that. To come back to something you said, you know, I could be the only person in the room and I'm still not the smartest person in the room. So I depend on these people in here. And we all have a relationship for the last three years. We ran against each other and I know it's possible because then we ran together. So it wasn't, we had a relationship, you know, we were cordial, we talked, you were elected, I wasn't, but it, you know? So we've all spent a lot of time together. So sometimes it's, it's weird to me that we don't have a, a close relationship because we spent so much time together. There was something that changed it somewhere. But yeah, just the common goal is the thing. You can work towards together as a team, but you have to have the common goal.
You know, one example, and I'll just come right out and say it. I mean, there was a big stink about names on a sign. And I'd hate to think what it's going to cost us in attorney's fees. In fact, the attorneys already said we're spending a fortune over two names on a sign. How's that productive for the town? How's that productive for the people in this town that it's? it's going to cost us in attorney's fees. In fact, the attorneys already said we're spending a fortune over two names on a sign. How's that productive for the town? How's that productive for the people in this town that expect us to do a job when, you know, you continually bicker over miniscule things like that? I mean, it's got to stop.
You know, Dennis, I was one of those that bickered about it and, you know, and I, I don't want my name, that's why, I just didn't want my name associated with, associated with something I didn't believe in from the beginning. You know what I mean? From the get-go, I voted against it. And so, that, that was my bickering.
Was it worth the amount of money we spent?
You know, Dennis, I didn't put it to the attorney. Uh, Mike did. You know, Mike put it to the attorney, I did not. Uh, all I did was say, hey, Mike, um, I don't want my name associated with that project, you know, and, and that's all I said. And I would even purchase the little thing to cover my name, you know, because I didn't want anybody to associate me with that. That's why I did that. I didn't seek the attorney, I, but I didn't even seek the attorney, Dennis.
What did we end with?
Yeah, it was unfortunate. It was unfortunate.
You know, I had a, I had someone ask me, um, or I was talking to a citizen, to be honest with you, and, um, I was talking about, for me, coming on the council, having lost two years prior, that the reason why I can get along with all of y'all, because I took some shots. I took some shots when I didn't win, but the difference was, what I told them was, I could take some losses. It was not about, okay, you make fun of me because I didn't win, I took some shots, but in the end, I still ended up on council. And I think the problem we have is, nobody's willing to take one little loss to say, this is what we need to go forward. It's always about, I have to win every battle. And for me personally, and I'm not trying to make this about me, the thing I realize is, okay, you, you won that, I didn't win that election, you know, you can make fun of me about this, but I'm still moving forward. So, if some of us are willing to take a, a little loss somewhere to say, hey, that wasn't, you know, regardless, um, I'll, I'll let that slide, let's move forward, it may make a difference.
Todd Rees?
Well, you mentioned common goals. The problem with the public body is, you're not going to have common goals when it comes to things that you vote on. You can have common goals in terms of mutual respect. You can have common goals in terms of running an efficient operation, just like in corporate America. If you sit in the executive room, you're never going to agree on every, almost everything. So, it's like here, you know, is, we're not going to agree on whether we should have high-density growth or not have high-density growth. Uh, the, the public doesn't agree on that, so, but there's always going to be debate. And so, the problem is, is the debate turns too personal, as you alluded to, but I don't think we're going to have common goals. So, uh, today, I think what you do is, is we look at the priorities and the mayor here may have ten priorities and I may have ten priorities and five of those may match. And I think today, what we do is, you know, to me is, I came in here to say, okay, I want to hear Crystal's goals and see where mine match hers. And then that's really where we moved forward as a group, is to try and find our, our common interest and, for the, and that would probably be what we think is representative of what the people we represent, because we all got different views of what we think the people want. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I, you know, we've been here over thirty minutes and we haven't set a single priority. So, that's really my focus is, or more of a common interest, where do we have common goals? You know, they're not all going to be the same, but where does Clarence and I match up? Where does Tom and I match up? And to me, that's where you try and get the cream to rise to the crop, to the top. Hmm, sorry, hmm, but anyway, that's, you know, what I think. That's okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's certainly valid and I, I think that's a decision point for, for you as a group, uh, because, you know, I agree with Todd, the most important thing to come out, uh, well, one of the most important things to come out of today or March fifth is, is those priorities that you're going to, you're going to spend your money on, you're going to communicate to the public on, et cetera. Why it's set up, why I set it up this way? In the conversations that I had with you, not with Todd, with all of you, um, there was more time in those conversations spent on the interpersonal dynamics than on the projects and the priorities. And it, one of my life experience things is, how you do things is often just as important, if not more important, than what you do. And so, that's why it was set up to work through, uh, these issues that aren't specifically the sign and aren't specifically the social media and things like that, they can be, but basically, how are you going to govern as a group of, of five and a mayor? And the process of doing that, I think, is causing tension, it's causing pain, you know, in the, um, impediments and other places. You know, one common theme I heard from probably half of you was, I don't know why I'm doing this. And it's a big job that takes a lot of hours that you, you certainly know this better than I do, and it, if you're going to do it, it shouldn't be painful. And I think some of the pain is self-inflicted. And so, yes, we, we could go to priorities and, and it would be productive. I think the same underlying issues would probably continue and ultimately undermine whatever priorities that you choose. But it is a decision point. You know, if, if the consensus is, let's go straight to priorities because we had good conversations about priorities, we can do that. But if you want to talk about process and governing and how you're going to work through that, uh, and, and that certainly includes the staff perspective, you know, that's how it's set up to do, but it, it is your decision on how you want to best spend your time.
You know, I think it's healthy, uh, the dialogue we've had so far.
However, I, 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 I didn't realize we were going to have a therapy per se session, you know? Um, but I think it's healthy. I've, uh, I've grown already in thirty minutes, you know? And maybe I was able to explain myself on a couple of things, you know, and that people might misinterpret or might have got the wrong idea of Tom, you know? Um, I have good intentions every time I walk in this room. I had good intentions when I signed up for this, you know, and I don't want, I hate stress and I, I come into stress when I walk in the building, you know, and it's unfortunate. You know, I, I don't want to have any bad relationship with no one. I'm very forgiving. I'm a very forgiving person. You can ask all my past employees, thousands of them, you know, and, um, again, I'm, I just want to do the right thing always, you know, and, and again, we're not always going to do the right thing and I'm not perfect either. And, you know, but I will defend myself unfortunately, you know, as military. But, um, God bless y'all and, you know, I just want us to win, you know? And priorities, we got to do it.
I'll say one more thing and maybe we need to move on. Uh, you know, I, I understand why we're here somewhat today and we're not really necessarily here, you know, if we were here today to discuss everything that we agree on, it really wouldn't be a very productive meeting because we already agree on it. It's already something that we agree on. I think what we're here for today, more than anything, is to what we don't agree on and, and how to respect each other when we don't agree on, on things. Um, sure, I, I, I can tell you almost what everybody in this room opinion is on, on different things and, and I want to agree with everybody. I, I do. I, I think we, it'd be great if we all had the same common goals and we had the same, uh, we agreed on everything that everybody did, but we don't. And the thing, uh, that we need to work the hardest on is when we don't agree to respect each other and to, um, uh,
Rejoin.
Not push that our ideas the only, is the only idea. Uh, we, we need to work together and we need to make ourselves, uh, on what we don't agree on and, and, and make it a better work, we want to work together better, make it a better working relationship. I, I, I think that would be the best thing that, that we could get out of this.
I just checked with the town attorney on the names on the sign, which is just, you know, something that, that generated on kind of emails or whatever, but it costs the town three hundred and eighty-two dollars in legal fees over names on a sign. And what could we have done with that money to do something like fixing potholes or whatever that could have done something to benefit the people of this town, but bickering over names on a sign cost the people of this town three hundred and eighty-two dollars? And that, I'm dollars and cents. I mean, you can't hide that.
Chris?
All right. I'm going to be as neutral, but I'm very candid. I think you hit a nail on the head when you said interpersonal issues. I feel like it's delaying our success, you know, being a successful council for Indian Trail. Um, we need to work as a team. We are one, we're one body. We represent the town. We all do have the common goal of making our town succeed and being somewhere that we want to live and we want our children to live and we want to build a bright future. So, I mean, I do feel like we do have that common goal. Absolutely, we have different paths that we each want to take to get there, um, and we have to come together to figure out what's the best route. Um, but I think that those interpersonal issues are our issue, um, you know, as a council, as being someone in between it. You know, I try as best as I can to stay out of any of the, the drama, but we can't constantly attack each other. I mean, that's not how, you know, we're going to succeed, attacking our staff, attacking each other, you know, council members, that's not okay, whether it's publicly or privately in emails. Um, I think we need to work together, ask questions and try to understand each other, build that stronger communication.
Okay. Todd?
Well, it's immature stuff, like you bring up the attorney bill, but then you contact the attorney to find out the bill and that was a cost. So, you know, it's just, I mean, you know, if you're talking to the attorney, it's a cost. I mean, attorney is a budgeted thing, it's a resource for the council. So, you know, it's, you know, it's just, you know, it just, uh, it's, it's, it was, you know, it was a, it was a personal attack, you know, and it's just if we keep sitting here with personal attacks, we're never going to get to a job of helping the citizens.
Take them off social media.
Hmm. Hmm. Well, you know, I, um, you know, I'm, I'm debating whether to keep going in the order that it was or just to start dealing with social media and staff and things like that. And do you have an opinion as to which would be most helpful? Tom?
What was your question?
Uh, would it be helpful to just take a detour from this and talk specifically about staff and social media and things like that? Or would it be better to just?
No, Kurt, um, I just think, um, we got to stop the back and forth. You know, Dennis, I understand you don't like me and that's okay. And, you know, I understand, well, I mean, you know, Dennis.
You called me, uh, what, a weasel?
Well, Dennis, I told you, I, I, I'm very forgiving, Dennis. You know, I've reached, I, I, I put out the olive branch to Dennis several times. I have, you know, and he just, I have nothing, no interest in talking to you. That's fine. And I'm, again, just like I told my employees, not everyone's going to like me, you know, and I don't care. You know, we all have a, a goal that we need to, I mean, uh, we, we have to set our, our gears into that mode to go to the direction the town needs to go in. You know, all this, you know, uh, little snide remarks that you do, you know, Dennis, you do it, man.
You said I attacked you out there.
No, no, that's, that's history about you calling the radio and stuff. Yeah, that's history, you know, I, I.
You started calling people names.
I forget.
So, I think maybe we should start with the staff and the social media, because I do think it is creating a lot of our issues. I mean, this right here started with social media posts. So, I think if we may, can address that, we can move forward, because I do want this to be successful and I want to get to priorities sometime.
Dennis, I'll say it publicly, I apologize for that day, okay? And I wasn't proud, hey, listen, I wasn't proud of it, you know what I mean? I left out of here and I was like, what did I do? Because, you know, that's just not me. I called Mike and told him, didn't I, Mike? You know, I said, I don't know, Dennis got to me that night and, you know, and I, and, you know, it just, it's back and forth crap on the dais.
Unfortunately, then somebody said that he witnessed me attack you.
No, you came up on me, Dennis, and that's no big deal.
That's a whole lie.
I thought, you know, honestly, I'm done with that. You know, I mean, Dennis, it's history far as I'm concerned.
All right, listen, you've apologized, get past it.
I did it publicly, yes, sir.
We got another individual that needs to make some changes.
Well, that, there's, that's him, that's not me.
Listen, let's take a five-minute break and then we'll pick up with staff and social media.
Hey, Tom.
Yes, sir. Put Tom on in.
I need, uh, we go out and get agendas for Tuesday night that we'll make sure everybody has before they, agenda. Okay. I'll be on your record. I'm not afraid of anybody. What's going on, what's going to come to me? Be more careful.
I probably should go to the restroom now, but I might have to.
Let it go while you have a chip.
I really don't have to go right now, but I won't be on everybody's schedule, same schedule.
I've decided that you must have stock in Chiquita bananas.
Well.
We see you eating bananas.
I never told you the reason why, so everybody could know. No, my stomach digests loud, so it's always sounding like it's growling.
Time and in social media, and let's, let's start with the staff. And from, from the management perspective, the administrative side, you know, we are, it is inbred in us to be neutral. You, the, whatever the council policy is, is what, what we do. And, you know, the decisions that happen day to day, basically, hopefully fall from some council policy or some, uh, practice that has become usual for council. And so, when, uh, staff is approached to do different things, you know, I think the manager and then the staff has to make a, a decision as to whether there's existing council policy and if not, do they bring it back to council to make a policy? Or is it something that's so administrative that, that he or she can make that decision? Uh, in Charlotte, we had, um, we had what we called four-hour rule that worked really well, that if, if someone wanted staff to, to research something or to do something that was going to take four hours, more than four hours collectively of staff time, then it, that council member had to bring that to the full council to direct staff to do it. And so, that was the way it had been for fifty years and it worked really, really well. There were still things that the manager and the staff could do through their prerogative, but, you know, again, we are, we are to be very neutral. And so, anytime, uh, the neutrality is called into question, staff doesn't know exactly what to do. And so, you know, I think it would be helpful if Mike would share kind of the impact on staff and this, Todd?
Indian Trail's a little bit different. Years ago, there was a lot of, uh, evidently, council going to staff. So, we actually have a policy in place of where you can't instruct staff what to do basically on a project, you have to go to the town manager.
Right.
So, so what you're saying is kind of a little bit obsolete because we have that policy in place of where we just don't go to staff and it's per the town policy and we have, there was a lot of problems, I don't know if you're aware, there was, in twenty-twenty, there was an investigation here. So, there was a lot of cleaning up, but that policy is in and instead of going to the staff and instructing them what to do or whatever, I think you can go if it's just little stuff, but basically, we actually have a policy in place to where we go to the town manager. So, kind of what you're saying isn't relevant, but for our town, but that's what the policy is.
Well, I, I think they're more similar than different and, you know, the manager
So, there was a lot of cleaning up, but that policy is in, and instead of going to the staff and instructing them what to do or whatever, I think you can go if it's just little stuff, but basically, we actually have a policy in place to where we go to the town manager. So, kind of what you're saying isn't relevant, but for our town, but that's what the policy is.
Well, I, I think they're more similar than different, and, you know, the manager, any individual council member can't direct the manager to do something or direct staff to do something. You know, that's something, if it's going to, if direct is the right verb, it has to come from five of you. And so, that's where I think maybe the ambiguity is. But Mike, do you want to talk about it?
Would you have 11 council members?
Yeah.
11 per, okay. Let me talk to you a little bit from the manager's side of the table, and I'll try to be very brief. Part of the manager's role is we have to walk the very thinnest of line, because we have to treat, and we do our best, and I'm speaking collectively of managers across America, is we have to treat all six of you, and there are six of you, as fairly as we possibly know how to be. And some days, one group may think that I'm favoring the other group, and then the next day, the next group may feel the opposite. And so, that, that, some days, that can be very challenging. If I, you know, get an email, is this the type of email we need to send out to the entire council, or is it just something that I can respond back one-on-one? Because one of the things that we try to do is not blindside the council with something or run into the problem of you told this person, this person, and this person on council, but you didn't tell me. And some of these decisions are very easy, and some of these decisions are very difficult because they do fall into a gray area. The other thing is, from the manager's side, I've got to keep the council happy, I've got to keep the staff motivated, and I got to keep the citizens happy. And there are a number of things that we're involved in that sometimes it seems like it takes a long time, but there are so many things out of our control. I know there was a project in Charlotte back when Wendell was the manager with the Convention Center, and it was out of their control. And Wendell was getting a fit, and he told him, he said, Mr. So-and-so, the project will get done, and that was part of the Convention Center. When staff gets an email, and this is pretty uniformly across the country, from a council member, we take those emails seriously. And sometimes we look at, this is what the email says, is there a story behind the story that we need to be aware of? And so, that generates some thought and some considerations. A lot of times, if I get an email from one of you, depending on what the email is, I will go to the staff and I will try to get all of the details before I respond back. A lot of the emails I get from you, I try to send it out to all of y'all, not to spur a debate, because if we start to get a debate, either the attorney and I will remind y'all that we're in fact engaging in a public meeting. And I don't do it to stir controversy, but just to make sure everybody's hearing the same thing I'm saying. The other thing, I want to make two more points, then I'll turn the mic back over to you. Clarence, you're absolutely right. The world is different from campaigning to governing. Governing's hard on a good day. I had lunch with some of the managers yesterday, and we were talking about how the town has changed, and one of the, one of the managers, somebody that was in Wilmington, as a matter of fact, that we were with, said that, one of their council members said, I wish I knew now what I knew on the campaign trail, because the vision is much very different. The other thing I want to mention to you is something the mayor said about we can always grow and learn, and that's why I encourage you to take essentials from municipal government. If you are interested on some online web-based training, the School of Government is doing a bunch of stuff on that, in terms of planning and zoning and how that works, there's a Leadership Academy. If any of you are interested in participating with that, please get up with me, we will certainly make that available and help you succeed in that.
But that's what you were looking for, for an answer?
Sure, sure. Is there an example that we could talk through about some of you having concerns about use of staff time and some of you having concerns that staff didn't do something or did do something? Is there an example that we could talk through so I could hear what, you know, I can, conceptually, I, conceptually, I get it, but is there something specific we could talk about?
I think it would be good for the council people to be aware of what is a state road and what's a town road, because we get these constant emails about potholes, and I bet you probably at least 60, 70% are state, and so, our staff gets tied up on state responsibilities rather than town responsibilities. So, we're generating a lot of time spent on something that we, we have no control over.
Todd?
I attended a public hearing for Old Monroe Road and talked to the D O P people here in the area, and they suggested from a council perspective, when someone comes to you about a state road pothole, the best thing to do was to let our town staff know and for them to call the Monroe office. So, that was their suggestion of how to handle it, and that's, that's what I've done. I don't have what everybody else does.
It'd be good if that wasn't the other towns do, how they handle it. Because we had got, had a tremendous amount of emails coming in about potholes, and it's a lot of productivity that goes toward potholes on something that could be a bigger fish that needs to be fried here in the town. So, I think that'd be good to see what the other towns do, and if they have this kind of volume come in.
Yeah. Well, I, I can just say from the, the Charlotte perspective, you know, N C D O T is its own animal, and it, it's usually, I, I just hate to say this, but it's usually more foe than friend. And what, what happened in Charlotte was what Todd said, that they would usually ask the city to inventory the issues and send them to them. That didn't mean they were going to get done, but it is, I, I agree about, you know, there are some things that cities in North Carolina just have to deal with, and local versus state roads, public schools. People just assume that municipalities in North Carolina control those things, and they don't. But, you know, that's, it's a valid point.
Yeah, if we got some kind of map that shows what's state roads and what's town roads, you know, that would be good.
Can you do that?
We could get everybody a map. If we do get a pothole, a lot of times, what I'll do is I'll reach out to Adam or Todd and say, it's a state road or town road. If it's a town road, we put it in the work order system to go fix it. If it's a state road, actually, what we do is we actually put it on the website, and that puts the state on a 48-hour clock in which to, to fix it. We found that to be more effective. But we can get all of you either a map or a link to a map. So, we know about 74, we know about Old Monroe Road. The state's not going to put a lot of money in Old Monroe Road right now, pot, you know, fixing anything but the very basics. And I know, I'll be real brief on this, I know what time, six months ago, we talked to them about the hump near the Harris Teeter gas that they're just now getting to.
Yeah. Mike, I don't know if this is questions, answers and questions, but what would you prefer? I mean, you know, I, I find potholes and I report them to Town Hall. I didn't know, I mean, I shouldn't call D O T myself, I would think. I would think, is this thing on? Yeah. I would think that I would have to contact someone here.
Yeah, I think if you just.
In next budget, we'll buy some more microphones, batteries go with it. I think if you just shoot an email just to me, or if you want to include Adam on it and Todd, I don't care, you just say, hey, Mike, we got a report of a pothole here. And, you know, I don't know that we want to necessarily publicize it per se, but just any more than if Clarence calls me and says, hey, there's a stop sign missing at this street, you know, or something like that. We want to make it as simple, as easy as possible that we know about it, we're not going to put it on the website, that, on the town website, that there's a pothole here. We just, there's a lot of things that go on in this building automatically that just is handled by process, by people that are very skilled in what they do.
What determines a pothole? Because I see stuff come in, and I look, that's not a pothole. That's, you know, the, the top of the asphalt has, has sunked just a little bit, or it's crumbled just a little bit, but it's not what I would call a pothole. So, I think that, like this railroad crossing down here, there's a little bit of concrete that came off, and there was a big issue made about that, and it wasn't a pothole, it didn't have any damage to cars, it had nothing to do with a railroad passing. But, so what determines a pothole and when really to report something? You know, we need to define what a pothole is and what it really needs to be turned into the state or the town.
For those of you who are old enough, we could say Phil Donahue. Does anybody know who Phil Donahue is?
Yeah.
Lord, I feel old. You don't know who Phil Don, there you go, proves my point.
Mike Douglas?
Very quickly, I, I think if it's a condition, whether it's in fact, actually a deep pothole or just something that someone is concerned about, just send me an email. That's all you need to do, send me an email. We'll forward it to the right people. Sometimes we'll get, the state may get complaints about a shoulder eroding. In fact, there's one over on Indian Trail, Unionville Road or somewhere over there. And, you know, I'll let Adam know about it, and, you know, he'll say, we'll notify the state, but they're not going to do anything about that because A, B, C, 1, 2, 3. So, sometimes our folks, if it's a town street, we will get out there and we'll see, well, this is a minor patch area, you know, we're going to put some rocks here, but we're scheduled to start to repave it here in six months or something like that. So, a lot of times, what the motor sees or what the citizen sees, the road professional may see a little bit differently, but at least we let them know. I mean, they even get things on Wesley Chapel Stouts where they dump a whole load of concrete right there by the loads that we've reported a couple of times, and I've heard from a couple of y'all that. And we notify the state, and they may determine that it's not a safety hazard. Okay?
Yeah, that's my point. If it's a safety hazard or it could damage a car or whatever, that should be reported. But if it's just small, little, you know, skint in the asphalt or the concrete, that's just, that's, you can run staff crazy or stuff like that.
Yeah, and that's why we, you know, we'll, we'll take, we'll take the report and send the staff out and make a determination.
All right, let me say one quick thing. You know, I don't know really, and no offense to anybody, I don't know why we're really talking about how deep a pothole is, and, and, and a pothole's a pothole, and if somebody calls it in, they call it in. I mean, we're not questioning the, the people that call in, or a resident calls in, whether or not it's a pothole or not. I, I, as mayor, I, I probably, and I'm, I'm sure I do, because people call the mayor, believe me, that, that's the answer, that's what people do. And regardless, I get emails every day, I get calls every day, and it's part of do, it's part of doing the job, and I enjoy that job, whether it's painting lines in the road or, or a pothole, or the, it's just a bad road, period. And what I like to do is I either do one or two things. I don't always call Town Hall, but most of the time I do, and I talk about how good town staff is. I'll call Town Hall, and I'll say, I don't even know who the resident is. I, I mean, I don't even tell, I just tell them about the pothole. The potholes, they're complaining about, somebody's going to get out there and they're going to do something about it, period. I'm not, I'm not out there to, to tell them who did it or how they did it or, or so on. You know, there, there's been roads that where I, where I, and this is something that I think the, the mayor does, opposed to what a council, I didn't do it as a council person, so I'm not criticizing anybody for not doing it, but it's something that I feel like a mayor does, is I've, I'll call D O T, I'll call the young lady in Monroe, what's her name, Mike?
Amelia.
Amelia. Amelia, nice, just talked to Amelia several times, get, get things done. Amelia put me through to the, the painting division of painting the road or whatever it takes. But this is what I want to go back to. There's a difference between campaigning, and there's a difference in getting things done. And we don't need, I don't, I don't need to know, and I don't even need that the people know that I had anything to do with getting it fixed. Just get it fixed. Let's, let's get the problem done. And I don't create emails, and I'm not saying it's wrong to do emails. You can do an email if you like. I think a phone call is about the easiest way that I can get a, when, if I want to call the town or I want to, I pay out the phone and say, and I'll call Mike, I'll, Mike, we got a pothole, or you got this, and it just gets done. We don't need to, and, and, and broadcast it out there, you know, this is, this is, you know, you know, it's a pothole here, and let's just fix it.
Is there, on the issue of staff and staff time and the use of staff time, is there any clarity that's, that's needed among you all? Or Mike, is there any, any gap that you are concerned about filling? Are we okay with where things are?
Some of the problems that we receive in here, there is no, we can't help a citizen on a particular thing. Some things, we're dealing with something right now that some citizens complaining, but what the person is doing is perfectly legal, is the first thing. The other thing we run into sometimes, and I don't know that this is related to the topic, but I just want to mention it, well, I've got it on my mind, is sometimes if we have a case, particularly like a code case, code enforcement case, and by the way, it's springtime pretty soon, so we're going to start getting the tall grass complaints, we have to give these folks due process. And so, our problem, our issue is twofold. One is that what we try to do is we try to get compliance, you know? I'll pick on Tom. Tom, if you cut your grass in the next seven days, that's cool, you know, your lawnmower may have broke or whatever. But on those non-compliant cases where we do have to take enforcement action, we do have to go through that due process, and sometimes that may take longer than what I would like or what the staff would like. So, you had a pothole, call me, let me know. We'll, if it's a town pothole, we put it in our work order system. If it's a state pothole system, or state road concern, then we'll put it in their system, and that way it gets a tracking number.
Okay. Yeah, Tom?
I guess I was kind of confused a little bit. I thought we were going to set priorities today, and I just feel like we're, we have issues with, let's just say it, kind of from Barbara's post with Little Joe T. about a pothole, or about a code violation, or whatever, but I just feel like everybody has a problem with what he's putting on Facebook. So, you know, I didn't know that we were coming here to, you know, go after one individual's post.
You can't say everybody.
Hold on. I didn't say everybody. Well, we're here as a group, and, and not everybody is, you're right, where. But I do feel like, you know, we're not here, I was under the impression we're here to try to come as a group to set priorities for the town, and you dropped it down to six, which I agree. You know, I don't think we need along with nine, it's probably unobtainable. Well, the last nine were unobtainable, because we didn't do any of it. So, I don't want to waste any more time in your windows towards a certain individual about his post. You know, there's no policy, there's a First Amendment, right? So, you know, let's move on. I mean, we not, I don't, I don't care what he posts. I mean, I see it, because I'm his friend, you know, I mean, Little Joe T. is. a First Amendment, right? Um, so, you know, let's move on. I mean, we not, I don't, I don't care what he posts. I mean, I see it because I'm his friend. You know, I mean, little Joe T. is, it's like a little newscaster, you know, so what? You know, it might offend you personally, I'm sorry. You know, I don't think that we're here for that. I thought we were here for something else. And I think we need to go forward, you know, not about policy. Um, we need to talk about goals for the town, the six priorities, you know. And hold on, I'm not done yet. You know, every time I have an issue, Mike, I send you an email or a text. You know, I do. I don't call Brandy if I have an issue with planning department. I don't, I don't call Todd Hunzinger. I did at first because I didn't know no better. Then I realized I got to go through Mike, you know. So there I am with that. I just think, you know, we need to stop the bashing. Let's go move forward with the priorities.
I think the question is productivity. And, uh, and that's why this subject got brought up, because there's so much productivity that's taken away from staff on things that should get priority. So we need to priori, uh, uh, what, have a priority on what we have staff doing. And so, uh, if somebody is over flooding the town with emails and taking away productive time that could be going to something better for the people of this town, then, you know, they should be directed to go a different, uh, different way. Thank you.
You know, I understand that. I understand that. Um, you know, we want our staff to be productive. Um, but, you know, they are here for the citizens, you know. And a lot of times, like I tell my employees, I'll go back to them, my only thing I have to reference to, you know, they get mad because they have to refill a pan of pot roast, or something like that. Or they get mad at a customer, you know, the customer's not always right, and, and the councilman's not always right. But, you know, we are here to serve the guest, the citizen, you know. Without the citizen, we have no purpose. Without the guest, we have no purpose. So without town hall, we can't get things done. So we got to inform town hall of things that need to be done. And, and I'm not defending Todd Barber. I'm not. I'm saying they're legitimate things. I don't think we just dream up stuff, you know, to bring to the council, or bring to town hall.
Well, we can sit here all day and argue about how we feel about how each of us do our job. Uh, I just heard the town manager say, email him on a pothole. That's what I've been doing. Uh, a post with a pet ferret reporting a pothole to the public, or talking about it, has nothing to do with town staff. That's just your personal opinion that you don't like the way I posted something. And, you know, I don't complain about how the mayor, I'm sure he gets more reports from citizens than I do. And he chooses to call, whatever. I don't have a problem with him, the way he's doing his job. So that's how he feels like he's doing his job. So I didn't come here to question how each of you are doing, feel like you should do your job. I came here to set priorities. But, you know, you're talking about this, but the town manager said email him, a pothole. That's what I've been doing. So, uh, you know, hmm. I mean, it's one of those things where you can read the email and say, we already handled it. Hmm, fine, you know. But anyway, hmm, I'd like to move on to priorities. And I appreciate you not interrupting me. I've never interrupted you when you've been talking. So I appreciate the respect. Thank you.
Well, I think this is the, the same decision point we had 45 minutes ago or so, of, um, moving to the priorities. And assuming, or hoping, things are different or better, or trying to work through them. And this is your town. And so I want to do what you think is the most productive and helpful to you, because ultimately, you'll get to priorities. And how those get implemented involves certainly staff time. It involves your time. It involves your communication with the community. So I'm, I'm fine doing either, but I want to do what, spend the time how you think is most helpful.
I'm one of six.
We make it clear, I think, one way or another. We make it clear.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm one of six. Obviously, you see, that's an issue. The problem was with your question earlier is to give you an example. There's no way to give an example without pointing fingers directly at certain people, which is why I sat here and tried to think very, very hard, and I kept my mouth shut. Because there's plenty of examples. However, I don't want to point my finger at Dennis, or point my finger at Todd, or, because it's not going to do any good. That just immediately gets people defensive. So I don't know if we're going to talk about it, if there's a way to kind of quickly run through maybe some hypothetical scenarios, or, you know, ways that you can kind of give us guidance on how to deal with stuff. Social media is a huge issue. I mean, it is. And it's around the board, across the board. It's a huge issue. We need to show our town and our constituents that we live in a town that we're proud of. Saying negative things constantly does not make that, make us look good. Saying negative things about a staff who truly do work very, very hard. I can't say none of them have ever made a mistake. I can't say I've never made a mistake. But they work very hard. I am very happy, and I feel like they really do make us look good. So why, if there's something we don't agree with them, do we constantly make them look bad? So I think maybe instead of saying, give me an example, maybe you can do it hypothetically so that we can move on. Because if you ask for examples, it's going to constantly be the bashing. Because I, I've refused to give a sample that's going to make someone in a negative light here.
That's a good point. That's a good point. And you can say that if you want to, because you can say anything you want. You can say, I never made a mistake. That may be true, but, but, but you can say it. We, we all can say it. We, we all can say it. So.
That would out be a lie.
Well, I think that's a valid point. Um, let's say the mayor makes a speech at the Lions Club or the Rotary and is clearly wrong with what you all have approved, or that what's happening, or whatever the case may be. Is there, um, a policy of any kind? And, and let me back up. When I talked about the public record before, if he tells that to 25 people, then it's pretty well a public record by then. And so is there any kind of council policy or staff directive to help clean that up? To correct what the mayor, in a professional, respectful way, said to Rotary or Lions Club, including all of the offshoots that come from that, whether it's an emailless serve, or, uh, a Facebook post, or whatever the case. Is there a, is there any expectation that the town of Indian Trail corrects that information?
No.
And should there be?
I wouldn't think so. Um.
We'll call them individually and say, you know, what you said was not quite.
I mean, you can call them individually, and, and I think it'd be very receptive to say, well, you know, when, what you said was not quite the way that it is, and I just wanted to, uh, you know, mention this to you and let you think about it. And, uh, and so that's, you know, usually the best way to handle it.
Yeah. Let, let me, let me, um, I, I think one of the things that we could do to, in, in this meeting today, is there is not any, and, and that's a, that's a very, uh, I think a key point. There is not a way. Therefore, false information can be put out there and, uh, used on social media. And, and I'm not blind, I'm not, and for some reason, you know, when somebody says something, I'm not pointing a finger at any particular person. And if any particular person in here takes it that way, then take it that way. Uh, I'm sorry. I don't, I'm not, not trying to, trying to point a finger. I'm basically trying to tell you how I do things. And, uh, and emailing things is fine. Uh, but when information gets put out to the public that is absolutely not true, I think that staff, uh, is either A, been instructed not to say anything, even though they know it's not true, or they're afraid to, to say, you know, to defend themselves. Uh, and we, we had this happen not that long ago. And, and it happened in a lot of different ways. And I'm, I'm not saying this to, I'm, I'm saying this because I want, I would like to see this get better. I'd like to see it get better. Uh, tell me my mistakes and I'll work on them. Um, but, you know, I, I, I just keep referring back to what, campaigning and working as a council, Clarence was, was, I had no idea you were going to say that. I, but I, I think that is the most important thing that can probably even come out of this whole thing that we're doing here, is, is we need to stop campaigning and working as a council together. Because there were, you know, there was a lot of things put, there has been a lot of things put on social media that just, just weren't true. Just were not true. And I think that we should do something about it. I think we should, I think we should, should, uh, have staff, and Kurt, this is, I'd kind of look, would like to look in, in your direction, and what to do, and how staff can respond and defend themselves, uh, instead of not defend themselves, uh, without, without, um, harm, without, without being afraid, you know, that the town manager's going to-
With no repercussions.
Yeah, with no repercussions. Thank you.
Right. I think that's the key. And I haven't talked to Mike about this, so he may be horrified. But the, going back to that neutrality thing, uh, staff, you all, from the staff's perspective, perspective can say anything you want to. And staff lives with it. If council goes a different direction and gives staff either a directive or permission without repercussions to do that, whatever that public record turns out to be, that's a different thing. Um, and I don't know how, how Mike feels about that. It would be, it could be a resource issue, whether you have the person now, the people, to do that. But anything that's council policy, staff's going to follow. But anything that's not, you know, if there's, if it's not policy, it, staff doesn't do it. If it is council policy, staff's going to do it.
I know that staff's got, uh, they feel like they, they have to stay neutral. But during the campaign, you know, we, we had bought a piece of property that we got plans for in the future. And during the campaign, uh, social media got filled up with, you know, they blew $2.3 million. It's not buildable. You can't build on it. And that was from people who have no engineering degree, you know, that, uh, you know, don't know anything about construction, or very little. And so, uh, you know, I expect the town, uh, to come out with something to say, you know, it is buildable. And we can use it for these things. So, uh, if somebody's telling something that's not true, and, uh, putting it out on, on public media, uh, somebody's got to come back and, and answer, uh, and tell the truth about it. I mean, it's, it's totally unproductive to the, um, to the council and the town to have that kind of stuff on social media.
You mean, a manager never gets horrified in their job? You, you always handled it so smoothly when I was watching you on TV. You were live TV with 11 of them. Um, let me, let me make a couple of comments here that I hope adds value to the discussion of, of how we move forward. And, and I'm going to come back to what you said. Mecklenburg County, after each county commission was, what was, what was the statement of the night? And the statement of the day is, we've gone from campaign to governing. And I think you're right, Mayor. That needs to stick in, that needs to stay there. It should be one of our values. Um, the other thing I want to make mention of is, social media does a lot of good, and it does a lot of damage. It does a tremendous amount of damage. And I'm going to talk about individual responsibility, is when, and I'm talking globally, because what I'm facing is what managers across the country are facing, and they're getting out of the business because of it. When information is put out that is not accurate, or irresponsible, regardless of what it is, staff doesn't want to get, get into a back and forth on social media. Because it just, it just leads into more and more drama. Something I hear around here a lot is, and I've heard from, from many of you, is the drama. It's another drama. It's the drama of the day, and the drama's got to stop. But when there is, when we take, when we put something on social media, you know, Abby does a great job. We want to, one, make sure it's right, and two, make sure that it reflects what the priorities of the majority of the council. You know, sometimes y'all make decisions I don't agree with. But, you know, it's just like a football game. Once the football game's over and Kansas City and San Francisco shook hands, they got on their separate planes and, until we meet another day. So if we talk about visions and priorities, I hope that one of your visions will be, we have gone from campaigning to governing. And we're all individually responsible for the success of this town when we work, uh, together. The last point I'll make is that we really, when we do see false information, or information that's on an objective scale pretty, not necessarily objective, I mean, we can all disagree, it does give us a little heartburn of, you know, how do we respond to that? Because we, you traditionally, we're council, staff doesn't get into a back and forth and back and forth with council on social media. Just creates more drama, more angst, and just makes everybody's temperature go up.
Yeah. What could we, what, what kind of direction could we give staff, or even to Mike, so that, I understand you don't want to go back and forth, but I also don't want people to be misinformed. And maybe it's not under ill intentions. Maybe they, one of us posted something, we really don't know. I mean, I do think that the correct statement should be put out there. Because, I mean, I've been on both sides of it. You know, I've been where someone has posted something that I was voting on, it was completely inaccurate, and I dealt with phone calls and people coming in and saying things. And it's not, it's okay if you disagree with me. It's not fair for someone to come at me about something because they've been giving inaccurate information. So I do understand that there really is a need for that correct information to be put out there. But I also understand, you know, bickering and going back and forth. I mean, I don't want our staff to deal with that all day either. So what is your suggestion?
I think your distinction between disagreement and inaccuracy is probably the key, because the disagreement, I don't think you deal with. You know, that wouldn't be, uh, it would be your prerogative as fellow council members to disagree if you choose to, in, on social media or whatever. But staff wouldn't get into that, uh, because council's made its policy decision. But if there is inaccuracy, then I, you know, my suggestion would be, if Mike's comfortable with it, that you draft a policy that gives staff that permission, gives that staff that direction, that if it falls into the inaccuracy category, that you deal with it. And-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Tom?
I'm not against that at all. You know, I think factual information's great. You know, um, you know, I think, you know, when I put something out generally, other than when the campaign season, you know, but something that I disagree with on something we voted on or what have you, um, the land purchase perhaps, will just use that as an example. You know, I, I, I'm not an expert, as you asked me demon-like in a council me, or closed session. Um, I, um, I'm not against the facts coming out behind something that I may have misinterpreted, or I misquoted. You know, I don't have a problem with that at all, Mike. You know, I mean, um, however, you know, I do think that we need to try to take it down a notch now. I think, you know, I'm feeling a little anxious now with this whole setup today. Um, however, but I'm not against, uh, us coming up with some sort of policy where the person in that, you know, like, um, Todd Hunzinger or something, he, uh, come, come out and say, hey, this is, uh, the actual truth, or whatever, or some, something, you know, not politically correct, but something, you know, politically correct, I guess. You know, so I'm good for that.
I have, I'd like to add something to that. And I like what you're saying. I like what I'm hearing. I think we all do. I think, I, I think there's a benefit to maybe what we're doing. I know this is, and I hope, this is the most uncomfortable part of this meeting. Uh, I hope we get into what, what everybody wants to get into, is setting goals and, and doing this type thing. And, and I want you to understand, or I want us to understand each other better. I want to understand why, as, as, you know, we keep 132, or we, we're different. I want to understand more why you think that way. And I want you to know more why somebody else here may think that way. And I'm going to give you an example. Um, I, I read on- I read on social media, and as you know, I keep politics off social media. I never talk about politics on social media. It's just, I think it's wrong. It's, I, I think because I, it's out of mutual respect for you and it's out of the mutual respect for, for council that I keep my politics on what I believe in. And, and here's your prime example. When I read on social media what a disaster buying this land was, and it's your opinion and, or Todd's opinion on, on, you know, the creeks and, you know, this is that and this is other, but, and, and basically what you're saying is, you can do your homework. You're, you're, you're not really good at what, you may, you know, you're blaming a, a council, and let's, and what we're doing here is bringing this out, okay, so we can talk about it, okay, and hopefully help each other. But what you're saying is, these, these people don't know what they're talking about, that they did this, yet when we set up here, and, and, and come back me on this, when we set up here, we knew what it appraised for. We knew that it appraised for about a million and a half dollars more than, than what we actually paid for it. And it was done by an appraiser that I had personally called up and talked to because, not because I wanted to be right on it, I wanted to make sure that it was, what we were doing as a town was the right thing to do, you know. So I even called developers who knew the appraiser and said, who is this guy? And, and they go, well, this guy's been around 40 years. This is the guy I used. This is the guy that I talk about.
And they give you what, half a million dollars more right then?
And, and so I really feel like it's a, it's, it's a good, but I never would put that on social media. And I would never try to make anybody else look wrong because you, I've never said anything about anybody being wrong about your opinion of it. You can have your opinion of it, but there was a lot said that, that we didn't know, the people that voted for it, voted for, I just saw it, wasteland or, or whatever that we ended up paying all this money for. And it's, and you know, in, in my opinion, it's just not true. And it is very true that a, a couple of weeks ago, and, and I, I made a call to Dennis Moser, developer, and I asked Dennis things because I respect what he's done in the town and his knowledge, he knows a whole lot more than I do on, on things. And we were talking in general about a, a community center. I said, Dennis, do you think it, a community center could fit on this, on that property? Do you, how, what do you think? All that doesn't matter. That's not, that's not what I'm here to talk about. But he did tell me, and I'm saying it to the world, that I'll give you a half a million dollars more for that pro, for that land than you paid for it. Now, that to me tells me that we made a pretty darn good decision when we did it because we could turn around in six or eight months. And I, I don't brag about that on social media. I don't, I don't, it, it, it's not, it's not, it's not what we're here for. We're here for the good of the town. And, and I, and, and these kind of dialogues, it, it, I hope it's good and I hope, come back at me, let, let me know. But I, I think, and I didn't vote for it. Plus, I never made a comment on it when we voted on the, well, I, I, I made lots of comments on that, but I never made a comment on, on, for, for instance, the parks. I never, I never said one way or the other, but I am for the park land for whatever we're doing. But we do disagree, but I don't put it on social media. And I don't put it on social media, and I just wish it wouldn't happen. And that's just my belief.
Well, I think there's a lot of fine lines here because, you know, we're all politicians. And, you know, you say, we don't put politics on social media, but then we get in, we get asked to endorse people. And there's a picture, a lady running school board with a picture of the mayor, and she mentioned me, and so we get drawn into things and people ask for endorsements. So you get a lot of political atmosphere around you. So when you start talking about policy and things, I mean, and you gotta keep that kind of stuff in mind too, I think, that, like, so just, just kind of a thought.
Yeah, I didn't put that, that lady put that on there.
She put it up there, right.
I didn't, I didn't put it on there, but that, that's not what I'm talking about.
But I mean, you know, we kind of get drawn in, is my point.
Right.
I'm not saying you did something.
Right, right, yeah. I'm not, I'm not taking offense to it. I like the lady.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's just-
Yeah, yeah, she could-
But we get drawn in.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it.
We were here the National Day of Prayer and, you know, we had a commissioner and I think he had a speech with you and me and, you know, he's, so it's-
I'm not talking about pictures and I'm not, Todd, I'm, I'm talking about-
As we get drawn in the atmosphere.
What we vote on, appears, what I'm, what I'm talking about.
Whether, whether you're pursuing it or not.
Yeah, more statements than what we talk about.
You know, you've heard the, the comment before, the elephant in the room, and there's been negative things said about what's going on this morning, but you know what? It's productive because we are talking about the ele, the elephant in the room, we all know it exists, and so the elephant's being brought out and talked about. So this has been very positive, I think.
Good. I, I agree. I think it was important to deal with. So I think, it sounds like the consensus is for, for Mike to bring back a policy that would not address differences of opinion, but would address inaccuracies in social media. And when he does that, I would say that the campaigning piece of that is universally tricky. And I would say it's tricky for staff, but it's tricky for you all too. So when that policy comes back, you don't want to be seen as suppressing the voices of the people that may be running against you. So just be, be aware of that as you go through it. And you may have to have a little bit of different interpretation of during campaign season versus the governing season because it, it is tricky. It is trickier during election season.
Can you elaborate on that? How is it affecting people that may be running against you or running?
Well, I, I think Clarence, that the perception could be, Madam X is running for one of your seats. I would be careful about the Indian, the town of Indian Trail proper responding to her candidacy. I think you as individual candidates can respond to her candidacy all day long, but for there to be official position from the town puts you all and staff in a difficult spot. That make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Todd?
But in campaigning, you have sitting officials running for reelection against each other, and they're gonna do comparisons against each other. So you can't set a policy that would limit that. I mean, I understand you don't want to bring the staff or anything into it, and I understand the accuracies, but, you know, you sit there and, you know, then there's the Biden truth and then there's the Trump truth. So different people have different views on what the truth is. So you get limiting, you know, I mean, from a policy standpoint, I understand inaccuracies, but like you brought up that land, there's different views on that land. I mean, from a standpoint of a engineering perspective, an engineering study wasn't presented at the time it was purchased and things, so, you know, you, you've got truth of, you know, how different people feel about the truth. The appraisal wasn't looked at by council before they voted on it. Well, what's the truth there? You know, I mean, was, you know, you say, well, it was appraised, but it wasn't reviewed. And so that, you know, it's a lot of difference of what you call truth.
Yeah.
And what you call opinion. So it's like, I think you brought up a good point, you know, in, in the campaign, how do you determine what an elected official can and can't say if they're running against each other or if they're running against someone else? I mean, you know, at what point, Clarence runs in four years, does, you know, he had, he should have the ability to defend or campaign himself. And you're gonna set a policy that he can't is, would be, you know, I mean, you know, you, you understand my gray area here.
Yeah, but that's why I'm saying exempt that, or at least be sensitive to it, that maybe you have a blackout period on doing that from filing period to the election so that the town of Indian Trail proper doesn't deal with it, but you as candidates deal with it as you see fit.
Because, you know, in our county, we've had some pretty nasty campaigns and, you know, and Waxall just had a real nasty campaign. And so you, you've got, you know, people coming after you with inaccuracies. You've got people quoting, you know, or saying the town made decisions they didn't and different things. So it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, I admit, I mean, I'm a, you know, I'm pretty involved in Republican Party. I was at a function the other night and different things. So I, I can tell you, they, they've got their own view of things and so, I, I mean, I just, you know, I understand a policy, but I also understand the concerns. You can't limit someone's First Amendment and you can't limit someone's ability to campaign. And so I think that's maybe why we haven't had a policy.
I'm sure I can straighten out inaccuracies that are told.
Yeah, I hear that. I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
You know, I said this numerous times on the diet, just because someone says it doesn't make it true. If, you know, you can read the internet all day long and you're gonna find mistruths and you can hardly trust anything you read online anymore. However, constituents need to know how we feel about a certain topic or about what have you, or a piece of property, you know, what our thought process is. Again, no expert, however, common sense comes in factor too. And, you know, I, I don't have a problem with what you're saying per se, but I do get the, does it limit the First Amendment? Is it infringing on that, you know, with the person saying, you know, I don't like Jell-O, you know? Jell-O, red Jell-O was terrible today, or, you know, whatever. But I do think there, we got, it's a slippery slope. We gotta watch it. You know, I think we gotta be real careful so we won't infringe on anyone's First Amendment right.
I, I agree. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead. I was just gonna, so, one thing I will say, I understand, again, there's a difference in your opinion versus putting out false information. And whether you're campaigning or governing, if you're a current member of the council, one of the things that I learned also in the municipals, or essentials of municipalities is that your duties, that you owe your board, two things that I, that I highlighted was accuracy of representations and misrepresentation by omission. And I feel like that's something that we all need to work on. If we are gonna go on social media and say something, we need to not just put part of the truth, put the whole thing out there. It's okay if you say, I'm against this park. We may not have the same opinion on that and that's okay. However, saying that we're wasting money and putting it, bigger numbers out there or giving facts, because let's be honest, not everybody in our town is gonna go and research everything. They're trusting who they have on the board. They put us here to give them truthful information. So omitting information or giving them information that's not true, it hurts everyone. It doesn't just hurt me, it hurts you too. So that's kind of, I think, more than anything, I don't care if you're campaigning or governing, that needs to stay consistent. You can't misrepresent information just because you're campaigning in one way.
Can I give an example of potential truth?
Sure.
Okay. The town put out that this, over here, the groundbreaking was an extension of our park system since 2015. The prob, the problem is, is when you read that, true or not, part of the money budget, it's 1.8 million of a park bond. That park bond has to be moved, has to be used in the Crooked Creek or the Chestnut Park. So technically, if you're using that bond money, it can't be an extension. It has to be done in the park. So you get a little bit difference in the wording there, you could say, well, that's not accurate. So, you know, and so you sit there and you're going, well, okay, did we mislead the public? And you go on, what is the real factual? Because it's a little bit different. You could say, well, okay, well, yeah, it's kind of true, yeah, it's kind of not. So you kind of get a little bit of a gray area. So sometimes when you say, well, what's accurate, what's not? I mean, in order to, you know, of course, I mean, you see what I'm saying is, it's a little, you know, what was put out could be perceived as a little misleading or totally misleading, depending on how you look at it. So, you know, so sometimes when we're saying, like you're saying is, well, what's accurate? Hmm. And it's not just the council or sometimes it's the town, sometimes it's a town manager's report to where you don't feel like it was said the best way. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think that's the sort of thing you need to consider when you review a draft policy is to make sure that things like that are clarified. And it may be a trial and error thing. You may try something for six months or a year and then come back and amend that policy because it was too restrictive or too lenient. So I, I think the important thing is to try.
I agree. And I'm just curious, and maybe I just misunderstood you, Todd, about the, that land that, that was, when you say it wasn't in the park or was in the park? And, and I may be wrong, but was that, was that not bought with, that, that, that was bought as if, and, and you could go to Crooked Creek and you could do the same thing. You know, if you extend outside of what's in the park now, it's still crook, it's still part of the bond money. It's still what the money, bond money was, was gonna be used for with that land. Okay? So everything at Crooked Creek that originally, that we thought we were gonna do, we did, we didn't do it. We didn't have, of course, I think we either ran out of money to do it because there was a lot more stuff that we would have liked to have done. But if we were to go some, you know, over here and do something on that land, we bought all that land together and I'm, and what we bought over here was part of that land. So I don't quite understand what you were, what you're saying, but go ahead.
Well, I'll finish it then.
Okay.
Because it says, the first park extension since 2015, when you grew brown on Crooked Creek. Okay? But we're adding a soccer field in an existing park, just like we did in 2019, which is the Panthers field over there. So what I'm saying is, you know, it kind of depends on how you read it.
It is, but we didn't add a, we didn't add that soccer, we already had a field there. We just, I'm, I'm, didn't we, didn't we just turf it?
We put in the artificial field.
Yeah, we put a turf field down on top of another field. It was there already.
Yeah, the Panthers were here in 2019. I attended the ceremony.
Well, that, that was a ceremony, but I was there too.
Basically, we were adding a field in an existing park.
We didn't add a field. The field was already there. We turfed the field.
We added an artificial field.
You know, you can nitpick anything. I mean, you can nitpick anything to death and you can make anything look like anything you want to.
Dennis, let, let me just finish with what, with what I'd like to see and we go on in it. And I, I appreciate what you said, I'm not, I'm just trying to make it, I'm just trying to say, that's part of the park. That's part of what we bought. That's part of what we were using.
That 2.3 million was part of the park addition?
What now?
That 2.3 land you're talking about?
No, no.
It's gonna be part of the addition?
I'm talking about the soc, the new soccer field. It is a part of the 1.8, the 1.8 million dollars that we can spend on that.
It's being built in an existing park land.
On additional, yeah, park land.
Okay.
That, because, because we wouldn't be able to build it. We would, that has to be built on park land. That has to be on the land that we bought, so.
So, so the point was, we're not extending the park.
We're not, sure, we're extending it. I mean, you're making it bigger, is that not?
It's just how you read it, was the point.
You know, nitpicking costs this town several days of unproductive time nitpicking, arguing over something, and it cost almost $400 in legal fees. So what did nitpicking get us?
Dennis, Dennis, let, let's continue. The only thing I wanted to get, and I, and I just wanted to clarify that or, or better understand what you were saying, really, is, is what I, and, and I understand now what you're saying. But two things, word factual, and another word is, and I, I don't know who used it, slippery slope, because I just wrote, I did, you did, you, 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 you did, and I think that was a, a good word to, to use for it, or to use when you, when you were saying it. But it, like, and I, I, also I heard you, you were against the park. And that's good. I mean, that's okay. That, that's okay. You were good, you were against-
The price.
Spending seven and a half million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay? I get it. I get it. It don't bother me. But the part that bothers me is, and the slippery slope comes up, is when, when we put out to the public that this is wasteland that we bought.
Is it 2.3 acre, or 10, 10 acre, whatever it is over here?
Or 12, 11 point, whatever it is, acres.
I get it.
Yeah, whatever it is. When it's, when it's not. It's not. And, and the reason it's not is because it was, the factual part of that is what it's appraised for. It's appra, it is worth what, what it's appraised for, but not only that, think about- It's appra, it is worth what, what it's appraised for, but not only that, think about it, if you bought a piece of land, six months later, that somebody's offering you a half a million dollars more.
It's great.
Do you know what that means? He knows that it's worth even more than a half million dollars more than you paid for it. It's probably worth $2 million more than you paid for it because he want, he, he's not going to buy it for that. But I'm, but, but those, that's what I mean. Don't, let's don't put out, I didn't, nobody here put out things that are untrue, as you, if it can be your opinion, but to say that it, that it's, that it's wasteland or whatever it is, it's not true.
Well, you know, and again, back to what I said earlier, evidently, this was intended to, not intended for what the purpose is here. I mean, we're going back and forth on emails. Hold on. I appreciate that that land's probably worth $2 million more than we paid for it, but when I was informed, Blue Line Creeks and 30-foot easements on either side of one of those, which you can't build on a Blue Line Creek without Department of Engineers, the military, Army of Engineers Corps, excuse me. But, and then you have a drainage, or drain pipe going down through the middle of it, which you can move, costs you probably millions of dollars. It had 30-foot easements on the side of it also. And then it kicks up to the right, if you're looking at it this way, goes out that way. I just didn't see where you could possibly build a community center, which I thought that was the intention of the land. Okay? So I admit I had some negative thoughts on it. And then we're in closed session, David, that's when I kind of got angry with you, when you, you said, who made you a land expert? And you came at me, and I, you know, I had real estate background, I do, but I've never bought commercial property. It's just houses and stuff, rentals and stuff like that. However, I was just asking for an appraisal and, you know, the normal steps of buying a land, when we were just talking about, did buying a land. I said, anybody do any praises, appraisal on this? And that's when I was scolded about being a land expert. You know, so back and forth on the emails, I get it, and I understand that this, we need to clear the air, but I didn't know this was the setting that we were going to be in to do that. And, you know, I don't know when ever it would have been a setting to do that. But I kind of like that it happened today because, Dennis, I was able to tell you, and David, I've been able to tell you. However, I do think we got way off line here. I mean, you know, I took today off, I'm normally off on Fridays, but I did, I made arrangements for another manager to watch today because we're so busy, to come here to set goals and priorities. And now we're two hours into it, or, yeah, two hours into it, and we haven't set one priority, other than the possibility of infringing on someone's possibility, I said, First Amendment rights.
Well, we're going to switch to priorities, but I commend you for having this conversation because I think it was in the way. And I think you had it amicably and productively, and, you know, it will, it will take some time to figure out the right way to calibrate this policy if you decide to go that way. But, you know, I, I hear you, Tom, about the priorities, and we're going to go there now, but I don't think you could expect to get a whole lot out of your priorities if you didn't have those conversations.
You know, I agree. And, you know, at first I felt like it was open season on each other, you know, honestly. And, but I, you know, I do feel better though, I promise you I do. Because, I mean, I don't want no ill will towards anybody. I mean, I have great intentions coming here.
Well, let's keep it that way. I do too, and I feel better about it. Go ahead.
It's like, you know, you have an opinion on the land. Like you think, well, it's worth another half million dollars. Well, how does the citizens, you know, a little bit different perspective? I mean, I respect that, you're right. You know, what you're saying is right. But when I say, how do the citizens benefit that, you know, they never see the extra half a million of that appreciable asset unless we sell it. So it's, so it's, to my point, that's a little bit of a moot point. So it's a little bit different opinion, but what you're, what you're saying is right, and what I'm saying is right. So, you know, like you said, I think it just comes down to say, you know, I respect what you're saying.
Well, and I respect what you're saying.
You know, and it's, so it's.
You may not want to hear this, but I don't think what you're saying is right. And, and, but, but, but that's okay.
Yeah, but the citizens never see that half million unless we sell it.
Commercial developer, that has a lot more knowledge than these people.
You know, I mean.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, and I'm, listen, I can still disagree with you 100%. And, you know, I still think when a.
And respect each other.
Yeah, I do.
Was the point, yeah.
And, and a developer absolutely knows more than I do. Absolutely, I wouldn't expect him to.
Well, no, I just think it's a good, a good deal that he pays that much more for.
I think we ought to sell it. Sold, you bought it.
Yeah, I don't want, see, I don't want to sell it, so that's a difference.
No, I know, I get it, I get it. Hey, let's build something while it's, if we bought it, let's do something with it.
That's the next part of the program.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and talk about priorities, starting on page eight.
I think it's, I think it was a good talk.
I do, I think this is where Dr. Vivin's so many ways that isn't on this paper. It's difficult to be.
Sure it is, but I mean, you might as well get it out.
Yeah.
Green food, bananas, what, it's supposed to help lower.
Page eight, the strategic priorities from our conversations. I think the good news is, there was good consensus around three of them. And then a good conversation about three more that you, you might consider or you might not. But the first one that, that all of you said was important, you know, Indian Trail should be a safe, safe community. It's the top priority of any municipality. There was discussion about whether you need more sheriff's deputies. There was a question as to whether it was time to start thinking about your own fire department. The issue of more streetlights. But there was, there was really, as unanimous would imply, no dissension about that, and that was usually the first thing out of people's mouth, that it's going to be your top priority. And as I mentioned at the first, the first of this meeting, what my suggestion would be as for next steps, after we, we'll talk through these things. But if, if these three and three more, or two more, or whatever the case may be, turn out to be something you want to look at for priorities for next year, Mike and the staff would bring back a draft work plan for our March 5 conversation. So any, any conversation about public safety? Any question about whether it's a priority? Do you want to talk about the fire department? Do you want to talk about the sheriff's? I know they made a request last year, I don't know what they're requesting this year. Do you want to get into that level of detail now, or do you want to wait and see what the work plan is?
I think we should. I think we should, and also, Mike, I have a question for Mike. Mike, do you know how much Indian Trail has grown this year?
Not specifically, but we could get that.
I think that's important for us all to know. And, and we got to really listen to what the sheriff's department said like last year when they, they're overworked, basically, with the amount of people they have compared to the county. You know, I know that's numbers, but I do believe that we, they need help, you know, and I believe that, that we can really help them this year. I hope that's a general consensus from us all.
Anything else on sheriff deputies at this point?
I think we should just listen to them, see what they, see what they say, you know, see what they come up with.
Yeah, the sheriff's department will come with a proposal, and, you know, and, and I know they just got a $3 an hour raise, is what Kathy told me the other day. Where that came from, I have, does that affect our contract when they get a raise?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, and, you know, and, and I think with the Moro situation, what they just did with their police department is probably going to put pressure on the county and us and everyone to kind of do more. But anyway, that's all I got to say. They're going, they'll come to us with a proposal.
Any discussion about fire and more streetlights?
I don't think we need to incur any more cost for services in that aspect because we have the three that we have now through the county. I, I think we contributed very well with those three fire trucks, so, I mean, we are leasing them to them wherever we did, I guess we can take them back, you know, because we are leasing them to it for a dollar a year. But I obviously don't know that I would want to go down that journey.
Okay. Okay. Any thoughts on streetlights?
Lot of money.
Lot of money. Okay. For streetlights, more.
Well, let Crystal say something.
I'd love to see, I don't know who put that in there, it wasn't me, but I would love to see more streetlights. But again, I'm one of many. We've had this discussion before, just because on one of our main, Route 74, we're the only town that doesn't put the streetlights in. I think Matthews has it, Monroe has it, so we're just the only strip that didn't. But I do know some of the citizens have, I follow a lot of stuff on social media and listen to what they say. A lot of people have said things about, like Monroe Road, but obviously, right now it's in transition. But there are other parts of the town too that are very dark, and if you break down and you're on the side of the road, I mean, it, we are lucky to be in such a safe community. However, it can get scary, and, you know, you're at night, you're by yourself. So I do think that that is something that we should look at and consider. So whoever put that on there, thank you.
You know, Crystal, I'm sorry to interrupt. I drive in town every, late at night, I'm sure you do too, when you're out on the road. And it is very dark coming in here. I do see, it looks like Stallings didn't pay their electric bill because, you know, over the bypass, that's part of Stallings, and their lights are out. And I mean, it's very noticeable. And coming into, right around Chestnut Park Freeway, or whatever it's going to be called, Parkway, it's very dark there. It truly is. And I don't know, Mike, are we going to have, they're talking about putting a light there at 74 off of Chestnut Park. And would that include some lighting there, do you believe?
Now, the way the state does it, and I don't agree with it, but NCDOT, they will typically not put lights on their roads unless it's like an expressway. You know, right where the Monroe Expressway starts, you'll see some lights. So what you'll see a lot of times, and Kurt, you've seen it in Charlotte, where when we wanted lights on state roads, the city of Charlotte had to pay for it. And one of the things that's happened is, believe it or not, sometimes people break into those lights and they actually steal the copper. They were having that happen on 77 for years.
Los Angeles, they had, what do you call it, circuiting wire.
Yeah.
And they were stealing it.
Yeah. But to answer your question, Tom, the state doesn't put lights. If we want lights, we can go through the process and they will let us put it on the right of way, but we get to pay for it.
You know, I don't know that. Doing all of 74 from the four miles, however, I do maybe think, coming into town, we should be a little more lit up. I used to love Taco Bell because they lit up that whole area, you know, but now, I don't know what happened there either. Probably not getting enough business because of, anyways. But with that being said, I mean, I would like to see something there. I would think it would be better for us to light up that area because it's really dark.
I'd love to revisit it again. I know that they said we couldn't do a portion, but maybe we could revisit that again sometime in the new.
Ask them to get it out, I mean, that part.
Yeah, the last time we got a CRTPO grant, and, or we submitted it and then, you know, council decided not to do it. We could do one of a couple things. If you, if council wants us to do kind of a streetlight inventory of, and to show areas throughout town that are relatively dark, and then have y'all look at some priority areas, we can do that. The CRTPO had grant, had we got it, would have paid all the upfront cost, and then you would have paid the lower monthly cost. We really don't want to go down that path again unless, you know, we feel like we have a full commitment from council to go in that direction on 74. But those are just a couple thoughts, just kind of let us know how you would approach it. The other thing I'll mention, Tom, and you touched on it, is when we want to put streetlights out, particularly along 74, you have to get a lighting study done from Duke Energy, and they're, they're another one that's in control of this process.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think I had mentioned one year about, I don't think we have a streetlight program, do we? Policy or program in the town?
If we see a need for a streetlight or two, we just.
Okay, so I know, I had thought about, like you said, is maybe a program in target areas, maybe like around Sun Valley High School or something, where sometimes it gets dark, especially to hit those in a priority area. And of course, maybe have a certain amount we budget each year towards that, if we can afford it. That was kind of my thought on, maybe if you wanted to move forward on a streetlight. And I know someone had mentioned maybe the roundabouts were real dark and different things. So, you know, was, that's like you said, if you want to put together a priority map, I think that's a great idea, and then we can move forward maybe on a policy or something of what we consider the dangerous, most dangerous areas in the town.
Yeah, we could discuss that with the sheriff's department as well, because I know they were.
Yeah.
Saying that they were for streetlights because they are hoping that it would lessen. Yeah.
One thing I'd like to comment on, I know Mike used to say, would you like your loved one to have a flat tire on 74 because of the lights? But I came back and told him, well, I wouldn't want them out there with four-foot tall grass because the snakes would probably get them. And so, thank goodness, we've taken over the, the maintenance of mowing over there. So I can't imagine having a flat tire the way it was. So that's been a good move for us.
One last thing I'd like to say too, is if, and I know Mike suggested that we not go back to CRTPO with anything unless we were positive, but I think maybe we ought to look, all look at the, look at the cost of doing what they would pay to do opposed to what if we, it's kind of like if you buy one, or if you buy four or five things, or if you bought 50 things, you're going to get the price better. So if we, if they're going to pay upfront cost and all this stuff, let's go back too and look at what, if you could get that, maybe what the cost would be to do what we think we need at Sun Valley, and maybe what we need at here, here, here. Make it get the whole thing done for, for less, or, and get the whole town, just something to look at, so.
Okay. Okay, good discussion for things to consider in the budget process, but it sounds like it, there's still unanimity, public safety is, is a priority. Okay? Okay, the second one was roads. And the, and what I heard in the roads discussion was more options for your citizens to have local streets as opposed to getting on state streets. And I guess I should test first, did I hear that right? And I know you have a complete streets policy or plan, and I don't know the details of that, so you may already be well down that road. But, but the issue was basically helping Indian Trail to be a little bit more self-contained with its own local street network.
I'll for comment.
We've talked about Indian Trail Road, everybody knows about that. We've talked about Chestnut Parkway, everybody knows about that, what we're doing, what the state's doing. We've talked about a road improvement program. We've upped the score 10 points in two years, amazing, so we're going to hit that goal of 80. We're in the process of completing a transportation improvement plan. Todd Huntslinger will talk a little bit about that in meeting with y'all to get your, your input on that. But as we move forward, we've gone in the last 10 or 12 years from not doing any streets to now doing about 100 miles. So as we start to look at building new streets and taking on existing streets and new development, and taking over old streets that are in neighborhoods that are NCDOT, assuming council wants to do all of that, we will, one day, probably sooner rather than later, approach the time where we're going to want to build our own street, which may be a new street as opposed to waiting for development. One of the things, if you look at this area down here, if you look at Indian Trail compared to some other cities, is you don't have a lot of connecting streets. And so what we've done with Indian Trail Road and Chestnut Parkway, you've kind of built a framework, and so now you want to build those connecting streets. Our tax rate is 18 and a half cent as we start to do more and more things that will get, continue to get taxed, pardon the pun. But, you know, at some point, you know, we may want to look at some alternatives to help support our road program.
Floor open now.
Sure.
Okay, I thought you, I didn't want to interrupt you with something to say. Okay, I'm sorry. The, I think we got 80 miles of roads now for town.
More than that.
More than that now? We put you 90, you think?
Yeah, 90 to 100.
Okay, I suppose.
Okay, I suppose. The, uh, I think the priority is to take care of what we got first. Uh, a couple of years ago, we implemented a five-year plan for road reservicing. We did a road, uh, conditional s- s- study and it came back with a lot of the roads in poor condition. I think that was in twenty twenty-two. And so now for the first time, as you mentioned, we're, those roads are gonna start being repaved. That's a five-year plan. The, uh, issue we have now is I think only three years of the plan are funded. The last two are not funded.
We've got all five years funded, I believe, but now one of the things that we had, yeah, one of the things we had was we had some pile bill fund balance that we had played down. We've had some money from the legislature and so we were pulling money down to meet those roads.
Well, that two million from the state went into the road, that road repair, correct?
Yeah, we put two million in there for road repair.
I was looking at Huntsinger's chart. I don't think he had anything listed for the last two years, that's why.
Okay, I, I can go back and check, but thank you for bringing that up.
It's funded, it's funded.
I, I think it is, but I can go back and check.
So you know, that would just be my priority is.
Yeah.
That would just be my priority, make sure we're paying for what we got already. And, um, then the, um, you know, as far as taking over roads, I, I'm okay with it as long as we can afford it. Building roads, I think, like you said, is, we're gonna need some help.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yep, we will.
Absolutely, so, um, but other than that is, I think, uh, one, you know, is I think we're coming into with old Monroe Road being built that now we gotta decide if we're gonna pay for, uh, metal streetlights and additional sidewalks. And if we do that, that's gonna have to be funded. That's not funded yet, correct?
I don't know the exact answer. I don't think it is at this point. Um, we do have, you're, you're correct. It is not funded right now. It's building the design. We do have some recommendations on how to fund that.
So we got some options.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Um, and also is, uh, we're looking at d- design phase of Indian Trail Road Phase Two. Um, we have two million dollars listed, but as funding. But that two million dollars also allocated for Phase One over cost?
Yes, sir. I don't think so. I can get Todd in here to talk about it if it'd be good for this discussion, yeah.
It'd be good. I just, you know, it's, you know, I just like to get a clarification if we actually have any money in Indian Trail Phase Two or if that money's allocated. I mean, because we, we're probably gonna have some Phase One cost overrun, if, you know, potentially.
Yeah.
You know, so I was just wondering where that money was. So that's kind of my priority is to take care of projects that we have. I am for taking over other streets, especially, you know, I think in, uh, your neighborhood, they brought it up to par. There really wasn't any cost for us to take it over, correct? Too much as a town, uh, when we took over.
You talking about Bonterra?
Yeah, I think right before I got on council, you.
I believe, yeah, but I believe Bonterra gave the town over three hundred thousand dollars.
It wasn't really a cost to the town. Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to bring it up.
Well, the, there was several.
Sounds just like it's.
No, no, there was for, there's some, there's different phases of it, but I think for the first three phases, or I could be wrong, but it, it took over those roads.
It's like post office road. If the state brings it up to par, then we take it over. Then basically it's a lower cost of just maintaining it than building it. So in those scenarios, I think it's a lot priority for the town to take over than if we just gotta build it or we gotta repair it. And I know there's a neighborhood on Rogers Road that they'd love for us to take it over, but they got, and parts of it, but the roads are just horrendous.
Hmm. And that's a good point. My staff may kill me for saying this, but we prefer to take those roads over because that way we can do a better job with them. Um, couple of points here. One, when you go down Rogers Road, like you're going to your neighborhood, off that neighborhood off to the left that we just took over, that wells, they got the whole neighborhood paved. I can't remember the name of. Sanderwood, thank you. The way this works is the paving company puts a one-year guarantee on their work. And so once that one year is up, at that point, then it gets turned over to us. Because it wasn't us that was, that were ordering the paving and paying for the paving, it was NCDOT. So it turns it over to us. Roads have a life cycle, just like your car, just like the equipment in here. So the auditor has that set on an amortization schedule. The other thing is, you might wonder, this town's very unique in that you've got a number of neighborhood streets that are, roads are NCDOT. The town went down the path probably ten, fifteen years ago of starting to take them over. They did it for a year or so and then suddenly stopped. How does that happen? Well, during the days of, of forced annexation, the town was growing very rapidly and the town, and personally I don't agree with it, I think if you live in the city, we give you full service. The town apparently would annex, but not take over the roads. So now you've got neighborhoods that are twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years old. The roads are falling apart, but the state's having, I'm sure there's shortfalls with the state. They're having to take care of seventy-four and some of their other projects. I think over a multi-year period, we ought to eventually take over those type roads and continue to push the state to fix them.
Good, good discussions. Uh, those connectors that Mike mentioned, I think are really important for moving traffic and they open up land for development too. So, yeah, I think you're, you're having the right, right discussion. So a lot of that will come back through the budget process. Um, okay, economic development. It shook out in two categories, downtown and non-downtown. Um, with the downtown basically being a priority, that felt like it was in process, but wanting to give residents the walkability and local shopping and dining options that you don't currently have. Uh, there was discussion about the downtown plan, um, from two thousand and six and is there a need for another one? So everybody mentioned downtown, everybody thought downtown was important, but nobody had a lot other than, um, about the downtown plan. Nobody having a lot of specifics as to what to do. So I took that as you have a process in place with downtown and you're moving towards it?
Downtown, that's why. There was a lot of social media that was skewed and, and so it turned into a disaster.
But it's approved now.
Yeah. Uh, the downtown plan has been approved. Uh, we're doing work on Indian Trail Road, which the road is designed to be a complete street so that you have wider sidewalks and people, as you start to get development, can walk from store to store or from store to the park or something like that. Um, so we've got that going on. We've also got, um, Indian Trail Phase Two that we're doing, but the big problem we have is we don't have any sewer. There's limited sewer capacity. I think eventually, once they get the sewer fixed, it will be years down the road, you'll start to see more development on Indian Trail Road, which is what you're wanting to do. You already have had the infrastructure put in place vis a vis Indian Trail Road. The, the town is also unique in that when you look at downtown, you typically have a, a number of businesses concentrated in a, in a small area. I mean, Stallings is having this same conversation, how do we create a downtown? Um, Waxall was there a hundred and fifty years or so ago, so they've got that. I sent some information out yesterday about a town that I think we're, we're very similar to, and that is the town of Holly Springs, which in the nineteen eighties, you didn't go to Holly Springs unless you wanted to do something bad, but suddenly they got a quality neighborhood in and Holly Springs is now pushing about the same size as we are. It's located near the Belt Line, it's located near Raleigh. And they've done a really nice job. It's, it's take, it takes time, it takes years. Over the last fifteen, twenty years, they've really created a nice downtown. Um, we've got a little short bus out there. If anyone would like to take a day trip, I'm sure Randy would love to have us up there to talk about the trials and tribulations that they've had, just to try to, to get economic viability.
I'd like to see a, a little trip down to, uh, Fort Mill and what the Close family did.
Oh, yes, good point.
Okay. Okay, uh, any, Todd?
Well, I guess part of the downtown discussion would be, as, you know, we got a plan, the question is, how do we attract the businesses and different things? And I guess that would come part into maybe a business incentive type thing, whether you want to provide rent subsidies to businesses coming in, those type of items that, you know, I don't know if Mount Holly is doing that or anyone, but it, it, you know, I think that's a discussion of whether as we look at something to want to bring businesses in. Of course, on the flip side is with the low tax rate, we may not have a lot of wiggle room to give a lot of incentives. So that, that would be a budgetary decision most likely in my mind.
Hmm. One, one thing I've seen, and I was on a downtown committee in the eastern part of the state, where they created, like you said, a granted incentive program, which is more of the facade if you need, um, exterior painting or certain types of improvements. This, you, you, the city, if approved, will pay a certain amount of money, but you have to pay for it upfront and you have to get it pre-approved before anything like that, um, can happen. But if the council would like to see a specific policy, um, we could certainly look at that and we would need to designate what area or if it would be citywide. In this particular area, our example that I just gave you, they were in an area that we call an MSD, which is a municipal service district, which means that properties there pay a city tax, a county tax, and a tax on top of, of that, because it is in a defined area and those revenues stay in the MSD.
Hold on to that, Mike.
Okay.
Um, you know, we had a plan back in two thousand and six, you're correct, and, um, nothing was done with it. Now we have a new downtown master plan, water and sewer is an issue. However, on, um, South Fork, Mike, there's a water substation there that can throw out three million gallons a day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's, what's the purpose of that? Just sitting there, just tapped? It's just waiting to go out? Yeah, sewer pump station.
Yeah. Um, if you're talking about the sewer pump, you're talking about sewer pump station. Uh, that's okay, because we're working with the county to help them replace some sewer lines while we're tearing up the road over there. I think it just boils down to capacity. You've got the Crooked Creek on one side and you've got Twelve Mile Creek on the other. I sent y'all out the latest figure. Um, I don't remember if I put it in my email or not, but one of the things with the sewer system is as systems get older, sometimes there are cracks in the pipes and stuff like that and you get what we call I and I in the business. And so if you've got a really bad system, your sewer plant is treating rainwater essentially, or stormwater, but it still calculates in your capacity. What I understand is in seven, the county calls it a water reclamation. I call it a sewer plant or wastewater plant. What I have heard is if you're at eighty percent capacity, you're supposed to be planting a new plant. If you're at ninety percent, you're supposed to be building a new plant.
Ten years behind.
Uh, yeah, I've managed towns with water and sewer systems and I swear to you, the, the short time I was there, eight months or so, we were always planning sewer plant expansions, so.
I, I'd like to say too, and, and I think that we're somewhere, somewhere around eighty-six to ninety percent, somewhere between eighty-six and ninety percent capacity now, uh, without, without, without a, without a plant. So, um.
Was that Twelve Mile or which one was that? I saw that.
I, I think, I, they're adding the Twelve Mile Creek and that's down near Waxall Way, uh, Kennesaw.
Which part of us?
That was, yeah, the southern part of town is that. Northern part, I think where we're sitting is Crooked Creek. And that's, if you take those numbers that I gave you that are in the pending, if I read it right, they're probably pushing ninety-three percent.
Yeah, it was all, it was sixty-nine percent for the one. It was sixty-nine percent for the one and, uh, but like you said, it was over eighty for, I think, future capacity. I, I don't know how they're running that, but the state recently, last year, I think, changed how they calculate the numbers. It's what one of the commissioners told me and I have no understanding of that at all, but supposedly it helped out a little bit. But the, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm like you. I mean, I saw the numbers. Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, one more thing on that. Um, Mike, when we're doing the complete street project, what, I mean, do you think that we should do the infrastructure for the sewage while we're doing that? Does that make sense?
Well.
My, uh, David, do you know?
What, what we're doing, we're working with the county on assisting them in replacing some of the old piping. I think we're around where the old town hall is, okay? The problem that we're running into is just the capacity at the plant, as I understand. So, you know, even if you put, you know, piping in, bigger piping, if you don't have any capacity at the treatment end, it's a, it's a problem. It's been years since I've really worked in sewer to any great degree, but I still have a big picture knowledge. The problem, I think, with Crooked Creek is that it, the plant has reached the end of its life. And the cost of trying to refurbish it is tremendously expensive. Let me back up and just kind of give a little bit more context on this. The U.S. Clean Water Act, federal act, gives the state the authority to do the permitting and stuff like that. So any kind of discharge like that has to go through what we call an MPDES permit. And the state sets the criteria for dissolved oxygen and all of that. And, uh, like Todd said, it's a very complicated process and it, it takes a lot of time and a lot of money. The last thing I'll mention to you is the way that you fund water and sewer systems is, we call it an enterprise fund and that means that the rate payers pay the operation cost and the capital cost, as opposed to, you know, shifting money from the general fund to do that.
So you're not gonna send a dry ice down the road, you know, for future.
The, the town is not, we will assist the county in whatever they need. We, we did, um, enter into an agreement right after I got here with the county economic development, the developer of Indian Trail Town Center and, uh, the town to, to run some new water lines for that development. As we start to acquire right of way, um, on the Indian Trail Road project, we will be able to provide some more relief on that water situation.
I, I have, just real quick too, um, you know, I, um, it, it's not only the problem that we don't have it, it's a huge problem too that we, um, we can't tell anybody whether they're gonna get it or not. Uh, because, you know, I've spoke to Brandy many times over the last year and we've lost some big, big opportunities. And not necessarily because we didn't have it, because we couldn't tell them whether or not they're gonna have it. So i- if you can't tell them that you're gonna get sewer, they're not gonna come. They're gonna go somewhere else. They're gonna go to Fort Mill or Lancaster or somewhere where they say, I've got it. Or we can do it for you, because you're not, if you're ready to go, you're ready to go. And, and that's part of the problem that, um, you know, I know that, that, um, me personally, I'd love to see us build a community center. I hope we all get behind that, that, uh, that, uh, idea. Uh, but we gotta get in line for it. Uh, we gotta get in a line for like everything else, like everybody else, and there's no guarantee for that. There's, um, and, and, and talking to the, a developer about a hotel, I think, uh, he thought he had the ho, he thought we were gonna build a hotel. And, um, there was, the county wouldn't, couldn't guarantee him sewer or wouldn't, wouldn't do it. And therefore that kind of shocked that. And I think he fully expected to get it, but he didn't.
What's going behind the Circle K up here on the corner of Independence and by the church and by, uh?
Behind the Circle K at, at the.
At the corner right there, but.
Seventy-four?
Indian Trail Road on seventy-four.
Where?
Behind Starbucks. Behind Starbucks there, building something there. I think, I thought it was a hotel. What?
No, no.
Oh, I thought you said something.
I, I don't, I don't know. If I've been told, I forgot, so.
I'll remember.
Before you speak, um,
Yeah.
And if the county opened this door, do we have any policy on private package plants? Or do we have any private sewer options that would people have? I mean, uh, it was my understanding at one time, there was a conversation in the county about maybe expanding that, but I don't understand the details. Could, could you speak on that please?
Yeah. Um, we did have a conversation several years ago as we talked through, um, sewer options and what a private, uh, package plant is, and I became familiar with those when I was doing work on the Catawba River, is basically it's a self-contained sewage plant that. on the Catawba River, is basically, it's a self-contained sewage plant that treats the sewage on-site. It has reserved capacity of X number of minutes, and if for some reason it starts to fill up, there's a problem, it sends an alarm, and somebody's supposed to go out and check it. Our position at the time, and I think what our position continued to be, is that the town doesn't need to be in the package treatment plant. We don't have the expertise and stuff like that. And then you run into the question of, well, let's just go on a septic system. Well, I'm not a septic expert, even though I have a piece of property elsewhere in the state that is on septic, but I understand the soil here is not the best, and you've got to have more land to do it. As you look at a sewer system, you have the ability to move some sewer from place to place. You'll hear them say, you know, "We're taking it here, it's supposed to go over here, but we've got some sort of connection where we can reroute it over here." But at the end of the day, at some point, that sewage has to be treated to a standard that's acceptable by the state of North Carolina before it gets discharged. And what we do is, we run into the capacity. There are some options, depending on the plant, of how much, how well you can treat water. For example, when they built the sewage treatment plant up at Mountain Island Lake, that was the same lake for Charlotte's water intake, and they had to treat it to a very high level so it wouldn't impact the water intake. All of that costs money, it costs time. I think those are the major things. Todd, I guess, hopefully I answered your question about package treatment plants.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
As a tangent to the downtown, do you need a sewer priority? Which would be more of a, probably symbolic, to show to the county that you were concerned? I just raised that. None of you mentioned that in our interviews, but is there any value in having a sewer capacity priority for the next three years?
It's out of our hands, though, right?
I guess it's probably more from an advocacy perspective.
I think the county knows.
Okay.
Well, we've got a medical park.
If you don't think there's anything to do, then that's fine.
We've got a three, what, industrial-type parks and stuff, so it'd be hard just to prioritize the downtown if it took away from opportunities.
Yeah, I was thinking more broadly, just for the whole town, but it sounds like you're doing all you need to do.
It's a, it's pretty lost cause in a lot of cases. I mean, it looks grim, let's put it that way, as far as our opportunity to get new, to get sewer. And I think other towns have tried, and Mike, you might touch on this, or Todd, you might even know this, what town was it, tried to get a, it wasn't, tried to get, I think Mike's getting ready to tell you, what did they try, and the county turned them down on?
Well, I think some towns may be looking to see if Charlotte can meet their needs, but keep in mind, what the state has tried to do over the number of years is to reduce the number of sewer plants in North Carolina. If you look at the financial picture of those towns that are in trouble, it's typically the small towns that's trying to do their own water and sewer, and they've let their system go to pot. And so, the state encourages consolidation, is the first thing. The other thing I want to mention, before I forget it, is, this is not about, probably our situation is worse than other places around the state, but other parts of the state are grappling with this same thing. We used to be, it used to not be a problem twenty, twenty-five years ago, and then we had all this growth and all of that. Some counties, and I worked in one, where the county was building a sewer plant, they were well underway, and they went to the town, and they said, "How much capacity are you wanting? And how much capacity are you willing to pay for?" You know, how much, how big of a check are you going to write, and we're going to reserve you the capacity? That question has been posed several years ago. My personal philosophy is, if that question comes up again, the council will need to make a decision, do we want to help pay for a new plant? And if the answer to that is yes, will we get some of the revenue back from the money that the county would get when they charge a customer for that?
You say it's a problem all over the state, but is it a problem in Mecklenburg County, or Anson County, or are you talking about the size of Indian Trail?
As I say on C-SPAN, let me revise and extend my remarks, okay? If you look at some of the fast-growing areas, okay, I think Charlotte has done a really good job, from what I can tell, because they're planning twenty-five years at least in advance. You get up around Anson County, it's kind of a different picture. Anson has not had the growth that we've had. Anson, I think, has a fair amount of sewer capacity, and I think that will play, and I'm just giving you my personal opinion for what it's worth, as wind gets, starts to grow with the university and its proximity to Anson County, you may see them be able to do some things that we can't do.
I think, actually, I think Marshville is looking towards going that direction, so.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so on the downtown, it sounds like it's a priority in the, you would be open to considering action steps that Mike might bring back for the strategic work plan and in the budget process? So, that doesn't presuppose what those are going to be, but just that the downtown is enough of a priority to keep working within that new downtown plan? Is that cool? On commercial development, there was consensus that you wanted more commercial. I think the sewer issue certainly impacts that, but, you know, the thing I would lift up here is, are you organized in a way to meet your goals? There was some sentiment that the chamber wasn't supportive of Indian Trail, and I don't know whether that's true or not. If it's not, do you need an alternative to that? So, again, I have no opinion, and I'm open to hearing what you think about that. Todd?
Well, Indian Trail's a little odd that, with the size of our town, we don't have our own chamber, it's the county chamber, which is fine. I think our town has a good relationship with the chamber. The, as far as economic development, I think you touched on it, is, right now, in the commercial development, we're, like the mayor said, we're a little impacted by the limit of sewer capacity. I think things that, for the future to look at, and Mike, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we're getting pretty full on our three industrial parks, correct?
Yeah, I can get you enough to accumulate, and I can also get you a ratio of commercial and industrial.
Yeah, and I think maybe looking at a, potentially, moving towards another industrial center in our town might be something to put in as getting started towards it, for commercial development. The one thing I brought up was, maybe we get more involved with the, what they call the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission here. Look into what the cost would be, would be the relationship, things like that. It seems the biggest grants and everything, being dished out by the county, flow through that. So, if we want to get involved in that or not, might help us with the county as far as it's flowing through there, they may be more inclined to give Indian Trail more sewer or develop. So, the, but, you know, just from that standpoint, you know, it might be nice if the town set up a business advisory board, or anything, and things like that, but I think from economic, I think most of the citizens, and I think pretty much most of us campaigned on it and everything, is, they like to see us focus more on commercial than residential by far, and it'd be nice. What would you say our ratio is? I know the county's ninety-ten, and I don't know if that includes Indian Trail or just the county, but I think we're sitting around seventy or eighty, as far as commercial versus residential.
We're much better commercial than residential. I would say maybe seventy-thirty, but.
Yeah, we're, I think we're, so we're in better shape than the county as a whole when it comes to commercial, but a lot of that's retail, so, but I like to, you know, just see us, I think, we made the point of, like to see more people stay and work here. I think we have, from a county perspective, I think that number is seven percent or ten percent drive out of the county more than work here. So, I think I'd like to see us move towards that. That's, you know, and then we have the incentive policy, if we want to put anything in there, but I don't know. I think there are some different areas, especially next to the toll road, that we might could put, and what town is that, where you go up three-twenty-one, is that?
Lincoln County?
Yeah, Lincoln County, you know, where they say that, you know, when you're going up to Hickory, if you've ever seen that industrial park over there. So, I mean, that's kind of my thoughts on moving forward. I think commercial development, yeah, is a priority, a big priority. Thank you.
Back to what you said a moment ago about, you know, speaking to Brandy, she's told me too, that we've lost some potential suitors, you know? So, I think right now, it's a moot point to even discuss commercial development until we get sewer capacity. You know, I mean, yeah, let's fill the ones that are empty, you know, that has the sewer. However, until we get the county, or the state, or whoever, to, let's build a new sewer plant, you know, my thought process on that, too, is, somebody's going to be unhappy, you know? Remember last year, or the year before, or whatever it was, they had, you know, a vote on it, and they didn't want it in their neighborhood or whatever? But some, we're going to have to put it somewhere, you know, in order to grow, to live, you know? And it's unfortunate, but right now, as far as Indian Trail's concerned, commercial development is, it's on the back burner right now, because we have no capacity.
Our fine planning director reports sixty-nine percent residential, thirty-one percent commercial, and light industrial. Something that emerged on the forefront, twenty years, you know, time has a way of getting away from me, but something that emerged on the forefront, probably twenty years ago now, is a term called inter-basin transfer. I don't know if you know what that means, but what it means is, the state now regulates, if you take it out of the Catawba, you need to put it back into the Catawba. And they do some allowances, because the people down in Florence and South Carolina, they have a claim to our water, too. And so, we've got, we're in the Yadkin, and we're in the Catawba, so as we start to have those, as the county starts to have those sewer discussions, there are real serious policy issues, is if we take it from here, can we put it back over there, or do we have to, and how do we do all of that stuff? So, it's going to be a problem for the foreseeable future, and like the mayor said a little while ago, some business is not going to tie up waiting five, ten years when they can go over to Cabarrus, or go to York County, or anywhere else.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but isn't there something that Charlotte's been involved in many other communities called, is it a duty-free trade zone?
At the airport.
At the airport? And so, some of the other areas have gotten them, too. I mean, would that help Indian Trail at all? And are we qualified? Just a question. And I'm not real sure, I mean, duty-free means that there's no tariffs on it when it comes in from other countries?
I don't know how it works, Kurt, maybe you do, but I think once it leaves, and there's a tariff, or is it?
Yeah, they're called free trade zones?
Free trade zones, and they're mostly around airports, but down east, around Kinston, and places where there's vast rural areas, they've approved some for down there. And I don't know exactly what the incentive is to businesses, whether the money doesn't go out of the business at all, or if it only is on the way in or on the way out. I'm not sure how all of that works, but there are, there is state legislation that enables them, whether it's site-specific, I don't know.
I think one of the things you'll see, an airport is an economic hub. It used to be seen as the weekend place where people would go and fly their airplanes, drink colas, and have hanger stories, but if you look at the economic impact of the Charlotte Douglas Airport, it's off the chart. But, and what that means is, some of the surrounding airports, Concord being one, Monroe being the other one, Rock Hill being one, their importance to the region, and to the traffic that doesn't want to go into Charlotte's going to be more and more. In fact, Mr. Platae, I think, has done an excellent job in doing the aerospace business, which focuses around that airport. And while the airport doesn't touch us, it bumps right up to our city limits, you know, there. At some point, you know, you heard the other night on Radiator Road, where there was an aviation company there, and I'm familiar with it, I didn't know they were down there.
Todd?
Yeah, the piggyback on that is, I think it's, in our commercial focus, the aerospace engineer, aerospace industry here is big in Union County. I had not realized that until recently. But also, with the hospital going in and expanding, there's going to be a lot of potential for more professional business parks and things, from that standpoint, that feed into the hospital. Another thing, maybe we ought to kind of get our town to focus in a little bit, we have an septic program that's been approved and going to be put into the community college here. That program, I think, is the only one on this side of the state, and so, that's funded, approved, my understanding, so if we could get a focus in working on that in our town, I think it'd give us a big leg up on maybe other people in the area as far as attracting that type of business. That's, you know, my thinking.
One of the reasons we have so much aerospace in Union County is because of the old OVAC, which is now called ATI. They make nickel alloys and titanium that goes into all the aerospace industry, so people locate here, they can eliminate freight, that sort of thing, because they're right next to the producer of those alloys.
Okay, so, public safety, roads, and economic development, both downtown and commercial, are priorities. So, before, or as I turn the page to those that also made the list but weren't unanimous, let me do two things. Dennis has a doctor's appointment in a few minutes, and so I wanted to check, on March the fifth, we're currently scheduled from nine to twelve, and because of travel schedules and such, there was a suggestion to go to eight to eleven. Is that agreeable with everybody? Okay, then that's.
I got to go to Albany, Georgia that day.
Oh, did you?
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, and we're good. And then the other thing, just to ask, I think probably the community center housing choices, and we've done some of the information sharing, but they may be a little harder than the first three. Do you have the energy to keep going, or do you want to move these three to March the fifth?
Well, it's on here, let's keep going.
All right, we'll keep going. All right, page ten, the community center was one that was mentioned by most of you, but not all of you, and you've talked some about it, your gathering space, theater, forums, and then we've talked about the twelve acres of land, and whether it was a good investment or not a good investment. But, Tom, I think I heard you say a while back, that if we've got it, let's do something with it. So, is there, what are your thoughts on the community center being a priority for the next three years? And given the sewer issue, so what are the steps that you could do if you choose to, short of the sewer issue? Todd?
We've got a thing out there, and I don't know what you call it, to kind of give us a design, or some options on a community center, and maybe you can answer this, Mike or someone, but we did the park and rec master plan a couple of years ago, and there was a lot of information. One of the things was, like, eighty-four percent of the people hadn't participated in any park events in the twelve months, but one of the things, I think, was they said, they didn't know what was going on, but I think we've done a much better job of getting out that information, so they know what the events are. We have a lot of great events, but one of the things that came back was the number-one thing, and one of the things, and there was a lot of different ways, things, and in some places, this is what I mentioned, but in one of them, the number-one thing was, they wanted an indoor-outdoor facility, multi-age type facility, and I don't know how that fits into a community center. I really don't know what that is, or when they asked of it, so I didn't know if, are we kind of incorporating that into our community center proposal?
Yeah, we're getting ready to do kind of a space needs. Yeah, we're getting ready to do kind of a space needs, as to what should be in there. Let me, let me approach it from a couple of ways. One of the things that we, I've tasked staff to do, is put together some information for, these are the upcoming things, in the next seven years that we see, which will build on what you're doing today, and I think you've had really good discussion, really good ideas, consensus on a number of things. But the other thing is, as a town grows, and as we have to adjust staff levels, we're running out of space here, and at some point, we're gonna have to take some of those rooms that we're renting offline, just for space for, for people. And the multi-generational, we call it multi-generational community center, if you will, so it's not necessarily a gem, we don't know exactly what it will be, so it can host a number of things, whatever council's willing to approve and design. Because there is a great need in this town, for people to go to a place, and have social events. I mean, you look at what the seniors are doing every Monday and Wednesday. There is a need to rent facilities for weddings, and receptions, and stuff like that. If you look at what Mooresville did, I would encourage you to go up and look at the Charles Mack Center, that was something that they built in their downtown, fairly small, but over time, they have added to it, and added to it as the town has grown. So, I think it can serve a number of needs, it just, we're just waiting to see what that looks like, and then we'll bring something back.
So, yeah, so, you don't know what that indoor/outdoor facility that was proposed, type-
No, but I bet you if I call Mr. Kramer, he can tell me pretty darn quick.
I was number one on that.
Yeah.
There was, there was a ton of questions and different things, so I just want to, of course, and you know, I'm for a community center, I, the biggest thing is just gonna be a, probably a capital improvement funding project of it, of how we fund it, that's really gonna be the, probably the biggest thing of budget, over the, how we gonna fund it, when it comes up.
And, can I make one other point, real quick? And that's an excellent point, because as we start to think about these things, we need to think about, how do we want to pay for it, what options are available? That's why I'm always asking Jim, are, when are certain bonds gonna be retired? When is the installment debt on this building gonna be retired? Thank you for mentioning it, about the parking rec, getting the information out. I can tell you that the workload and the activities of the parking rec have gone up double digits over the last several years, so people are really beginning to use our programs.
Mike, the acreage we bought over here, there's buildings and houses there that have sewer. I know we're collecting rent, you know, every month, in those two places. Would we, if we build a center there, would that sewer capacity work for that building? No?
Well, I can't say for sure, we may have to have some additional capacity, it depends on the size, if you will. It does have a good location, the frontage on Indian Trail Road, but the county interprets the North Carolina Building Code, you know, they say that's out of their hands, it's what the building code says. It doesn't mean we necessarily agree with them all the time, but they're the people that issue the permit.
Right. With that being said, with that amount of acreage, we could go small, like Mooresville did, and then build on in the future. I don't know if that's something anybody would think of, or I mean, evidently, it's Mooresville thought of it, but I'm talking about here, maybe start off small, and then let it grow, to like Matthews did theirs.
Yeah, you would, that would go into the architectural design of, of, does it fit? How could it fit? How big do we build something with unfinished portion?
This capacity of it.
Yeah. I mean, again, I don't necessarily agree with the North Carolina Building Code, but they didn't ask my opinion.
All right. I'll chime in right quick, just to go back to the original question, is it extremely important? The answer is yes, because, you know, you have to think 10 years down the road, and in my opinion, it's harder for me, because I was born and raised here, but you have to ask, why did you all move to Indian Trail? You know, and you're gonna have people, if it's the taxes, you're having people from other states move down here, because the taxes are cheaper, but most people are coming from, what, New York, California? So, they're used to being able to walk, you know, to a community center, they're used to living in apartment complexes, and things like that. So, 10 years down the road, you're gonna have different, a different demographic of people that you have now. So, I think it's extremely important to get a community center, for, you know, again, the people that are here now are different than the people that were here when I was younger, so it's extremely important to have one.
Was the question is, could we use the septic tanks around those existing houses? For, was that the question?
They're, they're on sewer.
Sewer?
Yeah.
They're on sewer, they're on a septic tank?
Right.
Okay, I got you. All right. Yep. Todd?
Yeah, well, back to kind of figure out what he said, I think a community center is important, but I think we have a higher need, when it comes to funding, is we really, like you said, we need more space, we need a public works facility. We need to get it out behind the sheriff's office over here, because we funded improving the building over here. I think we used the surplus dollars, or the upper money one, and they need showers, things like that, but I think our need study's coming back on the public works facility, and I mean, we, I think we have four to six million already funded towards that.
You, you did a three-year commitment, and you've got, I think you're paying your second, or your third commitment, you just did it a few days ago, plus we're recouping the interest that's earned over that period of time. I think everybody knows that cost, that building will be over $6 million, so just absorb that. We are still working with DOT, I wish I could say we were further along in the process, but at some point, if we can't get an answer one way or the other, we may have to go to a Plan B, and, and look for some other land. So, we're frustrated, quite frankly, that we're not going to a ribbon-cutting, but we keep pushing that envelope about every couple of months, and where are we, where are we? We do have some other ideas, if there does need to be a Plan B, that we'll be happy to talk to the council about.
But the finishes, you know, like you said, I think, yeah, we moved from funding the public works, to funding the community center, and, and I think the community center would fall under our goal, in conjunction with the Parks and Recs master plan, and where we're going on that, as far as budgeting and things. It would fall under a Parks and Recs budget, correct? Kind of?
It'd be in the capital improvement.
So, do it that way? Okay, that, yeah, does that sound good? I mean, you know, kind of, yeah, I agree with moving towards that, as, as the next, like Parks and Recs project.
What we, what the council will need to do, as we talk about these things, like community centers, public works facilities, I'll remind you, we still have 10,000 feet of sidewalks, that we haven't made progress on. Depending on what the transportation master plan comes out, when that comes out, and how that looks, and so, what y'all will need to do, is to do like other cities in North Carolina say, for year one, this is where we're gonna put our focus, and then year two, we'll pick this up. I think, in conclusion, I know we're, you know, if we're gonna wrap up here in a few minutes, I do want to say this, this town has a very bright future, I know of no town around that has the tax rate that you do, that's in a location that you are, with your proximity to the Belt Line, the Charlotte Douglas International Airport, and downtown Charlotte. The challenge that you have in this, is the sewer that we've also talked about, but to also talk about things 10, 15 years down the road, long after, probably many of you are no longer in office, but you could go back and say, that one we did right, this one we kind of messed up a little bit, but we did the best we could. So, I'll try to hush at this point, I do want to thank y'all for the work that you do, because I've worked with thousands, hundreds, if not thousands, of elected officials, and I know it's real tough, when you're on the other side of the table.
I got something to say about the community center. I just, dying for my time to come, I ain't together with everybody talking, I want to say what I wanted to say about it too, but anyway. You know, Indian Trail's a very desirable place to live. It is, a lot of people, look at it, look at the growth that we've had in this town. People want to live here. People don't want, people don't, leaving, they're coming. That's part of what a lot of people consider as a problem, is that people want to come here, people want to live here, and, and we've done it, we've done it without a lot of things that a lot of towns have. We, we've done it without a downtown, we've done it with, with just numerous things, and we're, we're, we're a bedroom community. I mean, there's, people live here, and they work in Charlotte, and they go back, and we've become, and we've done it with a very low tax rate, we've done it with an 18.5. Reason I moved here was because I had a daughter, and I lived in Charlotte, and I was tired of paying high taxes, and you had to be real careful about where you, where kids went to school, and they had good schools here, so I think a lot of people move here because of the, for their schools, and for the low tax rate. We have 18.5 cent tax rate, Monroe has a 50 cent tax rate, huge difference, and, and so we, we do have a very desirable. You know, something else Indian Trail has, is a lot of retirees, a lot of people retire here, a lot of people have retired here, and goes to show with the group that we get, we get downstairs, when we get 40 and 50 people come in, to play cards, and, and the primetime players that come in, and, and they kind of kick-started the community center. They, they want to see a community center. I, I have talked with Jim, because I'm, I'm very pro-community center. I want to see Indian Trail be an even more special place to live, and I, I see that 12 acres over there, and I'm, and I hope everybody sees it, is to have a beautiful center over there, that, that we can gather, that, that you can have, I, I went to, not too long ago, first time I'd ever been to the, the theater in Monroe, the Dowd Center, because in Indian Trail, the, the Lanty, the kids at Performing Arts Center invited me, and it was packed, it was absolutely packed, and it, they had three, or at least three shows, they did a play, and my wife and I went, and I was told, when we got to Monroe, that all the businesses around there have to get extra people, when Lanty comes there, because they, they bring all these people, not all of them from Indian Trail, but a lot of. I didn't think about it, when we saw this, that, on a Saturday night, we left there, and we had dinner, we had dinner in Monroe. And we keep losing things like that, and, and to Monroe. And Monroe has a community center, Monroe has a Dowd Center, Monroe has a lot of things that, that Indian Trail, and in a lot of ways, Monroe's got a lot of things that are going on. They got a downtown, that's very desirable downtown, not to say that we're gonna have a downtown like that, but it's a very desirable place to be. But, I guess, really what I'm trying to say is, I hope we all can get behind it. I've talked to, I, I cornered Jim the other day, I asked Mike, said, "Mike, is it okay if I talk to Jim?" And when the very first thing I asked Jim, I said, "Jim, if, if, I, I know, I know Adam, and, and we're, we're building this, in, for the, what we just talked about, the-"
Public Works.
The what?
Public Works.
Public Works building, right. So, we could build a public, so I know that, that's a necessity, we have to do that. I said, "Can we build a community center, and, and, and public works, without raising taxes?" Because that's the last thing I'd want to do, is raise taxes. And he said, "Yes, we can, we can, and we can build a fairly nice one," and that, that to me is the, the main concern, and it, and that, when you talk about indoor/outdoor, when I think of an indoor/outdoor, or something similar to an indoor, sure, it'd be indoor, but would be nice to have a, a theater in there too, you know, some kind of theater that, that, that our community can go to. And what's that gonna do? That's gonna, that's gonna bring, that's gonna bring things to the, to our town, that's gonna bring a, a nicer restaurant in the area, it's gonna bring nicer things that, that, that other, other people are going out to do. A community center not only has that, you know, the, the Charles Mack Center, because I have to, I have to, I go there, because I'm in the food business, and they have sales meetings there, and the sales meetings for, for PFG, PFS, the company that does it, they have about 200 salesmen, so they, this, this salesman, plus they have all the vendors that sell them food, so we have, they have hundreds of people there, and, and we, it's, it's a beautiful place, and I've gone through and walked, they got a big, wouldn't, definitely couldn't build a Charles Mack Center, because it has a swimming pool in it, it has, it is two stories right on downtown, but it's probably 40,000 square feet, it's a massive place. But, we could do something that's really nice, and what I foresee too, is inside/outside is, how many times have we been asked for pickleball courts? I mean, gosh, wouldn't it be nice to have a, a, a community center, where you had pickleball courts, and you had a greenway that runs right where the, you know, we can make a greenway out, out of the, the 30-foot easement for the sewer? And it'd be the, the Central Park, I get excited talking about it, it'd be the Central Park of, of Indian Trail. It would be the Central Park of Union County, it would be a place that everybody would just like to be a part of, and it would make Indian Trail, and I get excited about it, you can see I get excited about it, it would make Indian Trail very, even more desirable, and all for the right reasons, all for a park, all for a community, what it says, all for the, the community, to make our community a better town. And I'm, it excites me, and I, I hope we, we try to do it, the best we can, and we can all get behind it, and, 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 because it's not only gonna benefit, benefit the retirees, it's gonna give the man that, that has, that, that his daughter gets married, and he knows it's a nice place to take his daughter to, to get married, or a decent place, that we can give him, that he can do it for a good deal, you know, it can be a good deal. And, 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 Tom, as you know, it'd have a nice kitchen in it, may have a couple of nice kitchens in it, Charles Mack Center has a couple of kitchens in it, you know? Now, the crazy thing is, is they won't let us cook in there, except, they would have to bring it already cooked, they'll let you heat it up in there, but we'd let you, we'd let you cook in there. But you, you could have receptions, you could do many, many different things, and make it a recreation center. You could get the Boy Scouts, Todd, I know you're big on Boy Scouts, have a Boy Scout, something for Boy Scouts, right here in the, in the downtown area, just, just one group right after another, and, and you know what, I'd hope we all put our name on it, put your name on, be something proud of, for, for, you know, long after we're dead and gone, our grandchildren can walk up to us. So, you know, that was my granddaddy that helped put, put this, or getting this put here, for the community.
Well, you should tell David Self lots of meetings.
Yeah.
I think you just described a $20 million complex.
I might have.
But we can start out small, and then grow.
We, we could, we, we could very much do that, but, but you know what, I remembered what it cost to build this place, and you can't, you can't build this for eight and a half million dollars, you, you probably, what, this building would probably cost you 15 million dollars now, I have, I'm guessing.
Probably.
Yeah, it'd be a whole lot more than we did before, and, but you know what, it's just like everything else, I remember when, and I'll get off my stool here, and move on, but I remember when my wife and I were looking for houses, and I don't know if, and we've all done this, when you look to buy a house, and, and we all could, we couldn't, we'd always look for houses, and we'd say, "Oh, we can't afford that, we can't afford that house, can't afford that house." And, and I never dreamed that we would live in a house like we live in today, and if I probably would have waited for a house that I could have afforded to buy-
Never could have gotten.
I probably never would have bought a house, I, I probably would have never got the house. I love our house, we lived there 18 years, it's, it's in a beautiful neighborhood, I couldn't ask for any better, but 20 years ago, or 25 years ago, I never dreamed that I would live in a house that, that I live in, that, I'm gonna shut up, I'm excited.
I'm excited, man, you know, I'm for a center.
Sounds like community center's a priority. Okay, good job.
Paying for it.
Good job.
That's the problem.
Okay. Okay. The next one, I'm not sure is a priority. It just, it, it was mentioned, I think, by everybody, but from very different perspectives. You know, one perspective is we only want single family, and that's what we should do. Other was, we need more choices. We need more multifamily. And then the third perspective was, we really need to just focus on commercial development and stop residential for a while. So I imagine that pretty well flows in and out of your policy debates as you have zoning decisions and, and review development. And so we can talk about anything here. It doesn't seem to me that that's a priority unless resolving it is a priority. But that was just something I wanted to bring to your attention.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right. It's all right.
But yeah, I'm a guy, I don't think that should be on the list right now. Definitely, I mean, I appreciate the commercial development focus. Again, we come back to the sewer capacity, but yeah, but I don't think right now that high density is in the, it's not in the equation.
So...
I'm not going to get into high density or low density. One of the things we're facing in cities, as you know, we're not a Dillon's Rule, we're not a home, we're not a home rule state. We only do those things that the general assembly give it, then the general assembly take it away. Over the last few years, we've seen kind of an eroding of municipalities' power to control growth. There was a bill that came out that if had it would have passed, I don't, we would not have been able to do tree save areas and tree preservations, that sort of thing. There's also, I think, been a push to, to try to take on single-family zoning, but you know, that, that law has not been passed, and Brandy could give you chapter and verse on that. So it's very important to communicate with our legislators as to what our priorities are because the North Carolina Home Builders Association has a very active lobby that works 300 Jones Street every day. So our plan, you know, with the exception of the downtown plan, which has a little bit more density, is low density, when we did our comp plan a few years ago.
Okay. And then the last one on page 11, I, I think is probably not a priority either, and we had good discussion about information sharing and, and my policy is going to come back on that. So the only thing I would raise there is there was interest in, I don't know if reinvigorating or vigorously the HOAs, and having more people engaged in your meetings and in knowing what you're doing and in providing input is something that is, could certainly be a priority about how you go about your work. It's probably not a priority that you look at as the same way as you do public safety or transportation, but I thought it was a good suggestion and is a fairly common thing that I see across the state to, to get people engaged. So I would just lift that one up as something for you to think about.
Something that we've been wanting, something that we've been wanting to do, we just hadn't had the bandwidth working with the other stuff, is to create a citizens academy. Y'all used to do that six, seven years ago for several reasons. One, it's important that the citizens know how their town government works, and it is their town government. And two, as leaders, we need to work to build the next generation of leadership. Crystal was at the COG meeting, I think on Wednesday night, and they were willing to assist us in kind of reactivating that, I believe. Is that correct?
I think they would come and get it started.
So if that's something that the council's interested in, we can take that as a, as a directive that y'all would like us to, to work on that.
They had some people talking about it, but Matthews does it, and they say it's called Matthews 101, but they say they get different groups every year, which, that was my first question, is, is it the same people over and over? And they said, no, they actually get different groups, and it's been so popular that they have to cut registrations off because they just don't have the capacity for that many people. But they do it as six weeks or eight weeks, and each week they meet with the department. The department teaches what they're able to do and what, you know, what functions they perform in the community. And then the very last one is the council, where we, you know, tell them our limitations. It might be good for us too, where people understand what we really can do and see DOT roads versus ours, because I know a lot of the backlash that we all get is we put it off to somebody else. Well, it's not really us putting it off. It really is, our hands are tied. I mean, we can be a squeaky wheel and hope that we get a little bit of oil, but sometimes there's really nothing we can do. So just, that was just an idea, but yeah, they actually talked about it at the Central Carolina meeting, and they suggested, you know, they offered to come and help us get the program started the first year, and then, you know, would hope that we would continue it.
And we'll call it Indian Trail Square.
Call it whatever you want.
That's right.
Just FYI for, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just, I won't say much. I was just saying, I'm for it also. We, no, I campaigned about getting more people in here, and, and for the same reasons. Information will change the opinion of citizens sometimes. Once they have that information, then, you know, because we all hear it. Once they cut down trees on Old Monroe Road, or once they do this, and you see it on social media, they're blaming us for everything, whether we had anything to do with it or not. So to get people in here and let them know what's going on.
I like it.
Good.
Just to let y'all know, we've done that before. We've, we've had a citizens academy.
Six years ago.
Huh?
Six or seven years.
Yeah, well, that last while, Michael probably went through it.
A lot of people did?
Quite a few, but the, the bad thing about it, and I'll tell you the whole truth, if you focus on this educating about the role of government, it's fine. What happened is you had a town manager, Mr. Cohn, former town manager, trying to use that to show how you should vote a situation. He was, he was trying to dictate.
It's on.
He's trying to dictate how you should perceive a situation, how to vote in a situation. So he's getting political with it, is what happened. If you stay focused on educating the role of government and, and role of each of your positions, that's fine, but when you start overstepping your boundaries to use it to push your own agenda, then that's where you have a problem. Then it's indoctrination people, is what you're trying to do, and you don't want that. I said, I think it's a good program if it's done correctly. But yeah, Mr. Cohn's correct. They did have one, and it was successful. You had, what, 20, 20 or so, 30 people attended.
And there were several of them.
And it was, and it was several, for several weeks too, I believe.
And moved into the, the next one.
Yeah. But if you keep the politics out of it, I think that'd be a great thing. It really would.
But it did become political, become very political, but it, it, we won't, we don't, we won't have that problem. I don't think.
So that is the, that is the end of what you told me in the conversations. What I would suggest as next steps, first, any, any comments and feedback you want to provide, but I would suggest that you ask Mike and the staff to do an outline draft of a priority work plan for public safety, roads, economic development, and the community center, and keeping in mind that's only a week, so it's not going to be a 50-page work plan, but basically the outline that, that you could look at to make sure it's headed in the right direction, and then Mike can build the budget for 25, 20, 25 on that. So Todd?
Can we add public works facility on that priority list?
Sure. Sure.
And some of these are ongoing stuff, if you will, and some of it is additions or modifications and stuff like that. So to current point, it won't be real detailed, but it'll be more of a highlight. This is what we say we want to do, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Great. I think this was great. After, at first I was like, oh my God, what have we done? You know what I mean? I'm serious. And then I felt like it was a witch hunt, but then I felt, you know, a lot of positive came out of it, and I feel leaving the table.
I have a clean heart with it, and God bless y'all.
We'll come back. I want everybody to come back, and I think we got through some of the more difficult stuff that we need to. I think we all got a little bit of stuff off our chest, and now, well, let's, let's keep this and keep moving in the right direction. And, you know, we don't have to agree with each other, but let's, let's, let's work to make our town a better town.
Good, good job. I think you did a really good job talking about some difficult stuff.
Glad you all came, and let's do it again. Thank you.
See you on the 5th.
No, I was just going to say, you know, being the only one up here that's lost an election, I think sometimes it's hard to realize this is an honor to be a part of this council and to, you know, stay humble, stay within the facts, but there are many people who would have loved to be on this council. You know, there were some that just ran this last election, and so I hope that we always keep that in mind, that this is a, this is a blessing, and, and, you know, our job is to do the work of the people, so.
Thank you, Clarence. Clarence, I'm going to give you the star for, for what you said at the very beginning that, that I thought was very well, but thank you all.